But it is May the 7th, 2019, at 6:00 PM here at City Hall, 116th West Bridge Street, Granbury, Texas. And we have the Granbury City Council regular meeting is now called to order. I'd like to call upon Pastor Larry Dickens with the Face Assembly of God to lead us in our invocation, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance and our Texas Pledge led by our Mayor Pro Tem, Tony Mobley. And I'd also ask that everyone keep our good friend, J.C. Campbell that's here tonight. J.C., sorry for your loss, but keep him in our prayers. He lost his wife of 61 years. So, J.C., you're in our prayers. All rise please.
Would you bow your heads? Our Father, it is in difficult times that we come to you because we do not have answers and we need your wisdom. And Lord, you taught us that if any of us lacked wisdom, we could ask of you and you would give it liberally and you wouldn't upbraid us or you wouldn't come against us for it. So, Father, tonight, we pray for wisdom. The issues that are before this council tonight are difficult issues, but with wisdom and with consideration of one another, the answers can be found and they will work out for the best. Lord, you said in your word that the steps of a righteous man are ordered of the Lord and we believe that. And so, we just come before you asking tonight for your wisdom and your guidance and your direction. Mother Teresa one time made these statements and they were powerful statements. People are often unreasonable and self-centered. Forgive them anyway. And if you're kind, people may accuse you of ulterior motives. Be kind anyway. If you're successful, you'll win some false friends and some true enemies. Succeed anyway. If you're honest, people may cheat you. Be honest anyway. If you find happiness, people may be jealous. Be happy anyway. The good you do today may be forgotten tomorrow. Do good anyway. Give the world the best you have and it may never be enough. Give your best anyway. For you see in the end, it isn't between you and God. It was never between you and them anyway. Father, tonight, we also pray for our brother, J.C. Campbell. This time of his sorrow, Lord, in the loss of his beloved Sylvia, we pray that you would just comfort his heart, Father, that you would be with him. You said that you would comfort us in our times of sorrow and we pray that. Bless each member of our city council. God, may they work together and may they move together in unison. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God, one and indivisible.
Our first item on the agenda tonight is a couple of special proclamations and I'll step down here to the podium and we'll present those. I told my Mayor Pro Tem he better get in the cage to warm up. I've lost my voice a couple of times and I don't know if I'll be able to hang in there, so he's ready to go if I need to call upon him, I'm sure, there. We've got a couple of special proclamations tonight. The first one I'm going to be delivering is the National Public Works Week. So, if I could get the representatives with the National Public Works Week. We've got our Public Works Director and a whole group of people. I like the way Jason says it. Did we hire some more people or something? This is bigger than we had last year. We are growing. And folks, I don't know that this is all of them, but this is a great group of people and it's an honor to be able to recognize a Public Works Week or Month. And these folks are the ones that are out there. They do a lot for the city. They do a lot to keep everything running. They keep the lights on. They keep the roads good. They keep the buildings up to par. They just do a lot of things out there and you see them all the time. So, you know, this is just a small token that we can recognize them and be able to see what they do. So, when you see them out there working, don't hesitate to stop, shake their hand, maybe even buy them a cup of coffee or something because they work hard for the city of Granbury. This official -- yeah, thank you. The official proclamation, whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to the health, the safety, and the well-being of the people of this community; and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public works systems and programs such as water, sewer, stormwater management, streets and highways, public buildings and grounds, parks, solid waste collection, and waste processing; and whereas the quality and effectiveness of the facilities as well as their planning, design, and construction is vitally dependent upon the efforts and the skills of the public works personnel; and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments and offices is mentally influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work that they perform. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Nenuot, the Mayor, and the city of Granbury do hereby proclaim the week of May 19th through the 25th, 2019, as the National Public Works Week. And in Granbury, Texas, I call upon all the citizens and civic organizations to equate themselves with the issues involved in providing our public works to recognize the contributions which the public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and our quality of life. Signed by my hand. Amen. And I will say that there's a lot of talent in that group of people. There's welders, there's electricians, there's plumbers, there's people that can do just about anything out there. And so, we've got a really talented group and they're devoted to serving this community just as a lot of the other folks are too. So, we do appreciate what they do. Our next official proclamation is our National Police Week. And here again, we've got police officers in our community that are citizens of our community and they serve our community as citizens and they serve the community to help this community be safe. And so, I think we've got some representatives from the police department along with Mitch Galvan, the Chief of Police. We could get that group up. All right, let's give them a big hand. And don't worry, we're safe out there. I know you're seeing all these people in here right now. You're thinking, who's watching the house? The official proclamation reads, whereas Congress and the President of the United States has designated May the 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week; and whereas members of the Granbury Police Department play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and the freedoms of citizens of Granbury; and whereas it is important that all citizens know and that they understand the problems, the duties, and the responsibilities of their police department; and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against the obsession or intimidation; and whereas the Granbury Police Department has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency which increasingly, increasingly provides the vital public service. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Nenuot, the Mayor of the city of Granbury, do hereby proclaim the week of May the 12th through the 18th, 2019, as the National Police Week. And in Granbury, I urge all of our citizens to join in commemorating our law enforcement officers past and present who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their communities have established for themselves the right and security of all the citizens. I therefore call upon the citizens of Granbury to observe Monday, May the 15th, 2019, as Police Officers Memorial Day and in honor of those police officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives or have become disabled in the performance of their duty. This is given under my hand and the seal of the city of Granbury on this 7th day of May, 2019. Thank you very much for what you do for the city of Granbury, folks. And once again, when you see these folks out there working hard, just shake their hand, buy them a cup of coffee, and tell them how thankful you are to have them on Our next item on the agenda, the next item on the agenda is citizens' participation. During this time, the city's council has the opportunity of citizens to present concerns and address issues that are not matters of consideration listed on the posted meeting agenda and during this citizen participation period at the city council meeting, one per month. Subject to the following rules. A person wishing to address the city council must first register with the city secretary and provide the following information, their name, resident address, daytime telephone number, and the subject to be presented. Only one person may approach the microphone at one time and only that person, the microphone upon recognition by the presiding officer, will be allowed to speak for no more than three minutes unless otherwise directed by the presiding officer. Speakers must address their comments to the presiding officer rather than individual city members or council members or the staff. Speakers may file copies of their remarks for supporting information with the city secretary and the council will be allowed to receive input of this information for a future agenda item but will not be allowed to enter into any discussion. The council shall allot a maximum of 30 minutes for the citizen's participation during the designated council meeting minutes. Tonight, we have, Ms. Julia Pennell has signed up to speak at citizen participation. Julia?
Thank you, Mayor, City Manager, and members of the council. What a night to be here, right? But again, I want to address two things. I represent Friends of Memorial Lane and we have four of our members here tonight in two events. This past Saturday, we were honored to host the National Firefighter Day at Memorial Lane. At that time, we were able, thanks to our sponsors, Green Fox, Walmart, Visiting Angels, and Home Depot, we were able to gift nine volunteer firefighters, one from each station, as the Volunteer of the Year. Seven of the stations were there. We were quite honored. They got to take home bottled water and wonderful gifts and we had over 92 people there to honor them. So, it was a great day and we thank the city for always being a part of that. Our next event is this Saturday. It's, as you've just heard and seen, it's National Police Week at 10 o'clock on Saturday morning. The national, nationwide, it honors all departments of the law enforcement. So, what our wonderful chairpersons, Vicki Connors and Laura Fisher, are going to do, we are going to have a spotlight award where we recognize a member from the police department, sheriff department, Oasis River Authority, constable's office, and state troopers for their continuous, special, wonderful work that they offer to the departments and they will be honored. We will also be honoring Dub Gillum for his time and he's retiring. So, we encourage everyone to come. Plan B, rain out. It's supposed to rain. If you'll check friendsofmemoriallane.org by 10 o'clock on Friday night, our city manager has so wonderfully given us permission, if it's bad weather, to come here to the chamber and we will have the program here. It's too wonderful not to have. It's too wonderful not to recognize. And so, again, we thank you, city manager. We thank you, city council, for allowing us to have the events to honor our first responders and our heroes. And one of our heroes is sitting right here and we've mentioned him several times. J.C. has been a firefighter for years. He served in the Navy. He's on the Citizens Committee to do the Memorial Day. He's a Friends of Memorial Lane member. And so, his wife Sylvia would say, "Honey, you be at city council because that's where you always are." So, J.C., we thank you.
Next, council, we'll go ahead and move into the consent agenda. The consent agenda, we have two items on there. The first item being to consider approving city council meeting minutes of April 16th, 2019, regular meeting. And the second being consider approving the purchase of a HAM HD14BV double drum roller from Kirby Smith Machinery Incorporated in the amount of $65,950. Council, you've had an opportunity to look over those consent agenda items there. Is there anything on there that you would like to move or change at this time? Here none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Wadley.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Mobley. Council, any more discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That consent agenda is approved. Next, we'll move down to the deliberation agenda. The deliberation agenda, we have, the first item is actually going to be paired with number three and four here. It's going to be a public hearing considering a request from the Pecan Reserve Land Company and also a public hearing considering the request for the Pecan Reserve Land Company for approval for the site and also the preliminary plat, I'm sorry. So, I'm going to call upon Scott Sopcheck to give us some background on that, if you would, please, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Mr. Manager. What we have is a, well, we don't have our standard pictures with this. I don't know why we don't have our graphics tied to this PowerPoint. So, we'll just wing it. What we have is a two-fold request, one of which is a site plan for 48-unit age-restricted development on Hill Boulevard. The applicant is, the property owner of record is Menard Oswald. Michael Osborne with Collum Valley Engineers is the engineer of record. And the developer is JMZ Albatross Development. This is located just south of Lowe's on Hill Boulevard. It will be fronting on Hill Boulevard. The property is currently zoned multifamily, so the multifamily allows for the consideration of a site plan. This particular development had a site plan component tied to it from a previous proposal. And I don't know if we want to see if we want to get the graphics going on this, if that's achievable or not.
What a great-looking crowd.
You're not going to get off that easy.
So, what we have is a proposal. You can see the existing zoning map. Lowe's is to the north in the heavy commercial red area. This property is currently zoned multifamily. You can see it's bounded in the teal box. So, what's being proposed is twofold. We have a preliminary plat and we have a site plan for this proposal. The preliminary plat extends from its present location in teal all the way along Hill Boulevard to Water's Edge, incorporates that whole area, but the focus predominantly is on the lot being created for the multifamily. You can see in the left-hand tab that in 2012, the preliminary plat had expired. That's why we're going through this again. Also, as a part of the preliminary plat, we're looking at proper dedication of easements and fire lane easements, water line easements, et cetera, which is commensurate to the new site plan that's associated with this particular proposal because it's no longer consistent with what was on the books in 2012. Okay, this is an aerial of the site for the preliminary plat. Again, the area of focus is on the eastern boundary where the proposed site plan is being presented for the multifamily. The preliminary plat's a little over 12 acres. It's in the Granbury Water and Sewer Service area. It's in Granbury's Electric Service area. There are streetlights existing along Hill Boulevard. There are also sidewalks along the Hill Boulevard as well. The site plan being presented as a site plan case, again, this site plan is a race in the old one tied currently to the property and presenting this new proposal. There is no change in intensity. What was previously tied to the property is 48 dwelling units. What's being presented is 48 dwelling units. The only distinction here is that there's a age restriction that will be applied to the property as a part of deed restrictions on the site as well. So, it's not a general-purpose multifamily use. Roughly, we're looking at a little over 11 dwelling units per acre, again, commensurate with what we've seen in the past. As a part of the site plan, elevations of the proposed buildings are required to be presented. The architect had drafted those up and they do appear to meet our 80% masonry standard with a 612 pitch, two stories, 34 feet in height. 20% landscaping is required by our ordinance is being presented as well. We do have a landscape buffer. Also, as a part of the past requirement in order to try to work with the South Town residents located to the east, as they wanted to install a decorative fence as a part of the site plan as well, getting rid of the older dilapidated fence and putting up the decorative stone column fence along the east side separating this proposed use with the South Town residents to the east. It's not a requirement of the ordinance, but they wanted to go ahead and try to make that initiative and fluff up that fence that's along the eastern side. There's no requirement to the west. That would be bordering commercial. So, when that commercial development comes in, the burden falls on the commercial to protect the more residential application to the east. No variances associated with this particular preliminary plat application as presented by the applicant. I will also say that we have an acknowledgment of the park dedication fee based on the number of units which is required by our subdivision ordinance. The fee assessment is $25,200. We have a letter from the developer willing to pay that at the time of final plat. A TCP tree conservation plan was also submitted whereby they work around as much as possible with the existing mature protected trees there on site and try to integrate that into the development. That tree conservation plan was passed and approved by P&amp;Z as well. So, that's tied to the property and integrated in their landscape plan. One other thing that I wanted to talk about during the P&amp;Z deliberations that came up was one of the P&amp;Z members, Mr. Vale, inquired about the TIA, whether or not one was requested by the city staff. A TIA by our ordinance is, the burden really falls on the city engineer in order to initiate the dialogue regarding whether or not a TIA, and that's a traffic impact analysis, is going to be required to be presented to the city as a part of this. During the preliminary plat and based on the prior uses, the city engineer did not request one, so we did not see one as a part of this preliminary plat application. So, this is the application and to the right is the letter accepting the park dedication fee from the developer. Again, this is an aerial focusing predominantly on the area to be developed for the multifamily. Letter from the engineer supporting onsite detention as recommended by the developer's engineer. What's being presented insofar as site design and an initial assessment of the preliminary plat is that they use onsite detention as a means to manage stormwater. Our ordinance requires that initially on the onset, that the design engineer try to find an appropriate receiving channel. If that can't be found, then the city may approve detention as an alternate means to manage stormwater, but that has to be approved by the city. So, as a part of the approval process, in your motion, if you would, council, as a part of accepting this, would you, and this is highlighted on the bottom, vote also to accept the onsite detention design as presented by the developer's engineer and as recommended by the city engineer? So, we have two applications here. Your Planning and Zoning Commission, to circle back around, recommended by a vote of seven a's, zero nays to approve the site plan as presented. They also recommended by a vote of seven a's and zero nays to approve the preliminary plat as presented. Again, no variances. And they also voted, per your city engineer, your city engineer's recommending acceptance onsite detention as presented by the developer's engineer. Be happy to entertain any questions, Mayor.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open up the public hearing to item number three and four. Does anybody in the public wish to speak on either one of these items?
Michael Osborne, Collum Valley Engineering, 14700 West 114th Terrace, La Mexa, Kansas, representing JMZ Albatross Development. We provide the engineering services for their project. Mayor, city council, I'd like to thank your staff. They've been wonderful to work with as we've come through this process. We've agreed with everything and concurred on the design elements and as we're moving forward, looking into the final plat and whatnot, but I'm just basically here to answer any questions that you all may have and hopefully get this project, continue to move forward and -- get this project continue to move forward in a fast pace. I did want to mention, I have met with the adjacent landowners to the east regarding the fence, and everybody's on board with that. In addition, one of the elements that we have for the final plat deals with the water line. We're extending the water line down what's known as Hill Court over to Redbird Lane. Their existing main is on the east side there. We will have to cut across one of the neighbors' driveways in the right-of-way, of course, in that area. I've met with them also, and they're in favor of allowing us to cut through their driveway. So with that, I just kind of want to give you a little backstory on it and answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll continue how the public hearing opens. Anybody else in the public wish to speak on this item? Hearing none?
Could you state the podium?
Yeah, I'm sorry. That'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any question for Scott or the representative or city manager at this time for this project?
Mayor?
Councilman Wadley?
Where is the onsite detention pond? I don't see room for that.
It is roughly here. Is that correct?
Yes. If you look at the grading plan, it's fairly defined on the grading plan. It runs between the property line and the back of curb on the south parking lot, and then it continues up the east property line also. We've got a fairly large swath going up the east side.
The parts you call a drain easement?
Yes, yes, sir.
Where's the outflow go?
There is a current large storm box center south portion that is on the property line between us and the subdivision to the south. And again, that's not quite south, but I'm just referring to that as south at this point. And we're tying into that storm box.
Mayor, I have a question.
Councilman Allen.
On the back of the apartments, is that stucco?
I believe most everything on that apartment facade are brick or hardy board.
Hardy board?
Hardy board, yes, sir.
That's not masonry, is this, Scott?
Well, we have, most everything is masonry. I mean, everything you see on the facades except for the center portion there on the inside of the courtyard, and I think that meets the percentage requirements. What you see on most of these elevations is brick.
Yeah, but the back of it, show the one with the back, Scott.
So the southeast elevation?
The back of it. The back of a unit.
Next page. We're looking for this one, Scott.
I don't think I have that.
The southeast elevation inside the courtyard, I don't know that he's detailed that out. I know that we have 85% brick on the perimeter.
Right.
It shows the northeast.
So you're saying hardy board is masonry?
No.
So when the building plans are submitted, they typically run them through my department to make sure the calculations are right. They do have to meet the 80% from the bottom grade to the top plate minus your doors and windows. That takes a lot of area out. And then the other 20%, you can have as alternate material, which would include the hardy board or the efus or stucco, Portland Basin it's stucco or whatnot.
Does any of these back up to the residents that are there now?
Yes.
What size fence are you going to put in?
It's a six-foot fence is what we've looked at on there. We're over 100 feet away with the building from the property line.
And how tall are the units in the back?
The floor plate on the second story would be in the realm of, about 10 feet.
You saying where the balcony is?
Yes, sir.
If you're in the bedroom, are you any higher or is it the same?
No, the entire second floor is all the same level.
So you're just overlooking the backyard a little bit, not a lot?
Yes, sir. And we're quite a ways away. And I did show these elevations to the neighbors, and we did have a neighborhood meeting also.
Okay. On the trees that was there, whenever I moved here in 2007, I think it was, that thing had beautiful con trees, and vines growed up and killed as many as they could out of it. Are you going to replace them?
We have worked through with your city arborist and meeting the requirements of the TCP. We're putting, and I don't have the exact number, but I'm going to say it's close to 100 trees on the project site itself in conformance with either replacing the ones that we're unable to keep or augmenting with the current landscape plan. And I think we have two of them, of the larger ones that we're able to maintain. I know there's one for sure, and I have to go back and look if there was a second one or not.
Are you replacing them with a three-inch or with a?
Most of the trees of the size we're dealing with are three- and four-inch caliper.
All right. I live right there by you, and.
Oh, don't run him off.
Yeah, yeah, it's y'all's loss, not mine. No. We hear it all the time. We need apartments. We need apartments. We've got a bunch now. Just went in, just opened up on Hill around the other side by Brons, or not Brons, but Chili's, I think it is. But anyway, I hear people asking, just coming over here today, a guy called me tonight and said, he's sitting out there, I'm pretty sure he's here, I can't see him, but I think he is. He says, this is going to be a Section 8. Any of them going to be a Section 8?
No, sir.
Not one of them?
No, sir.
Or any of them going to be low-income?
They are what are known as restricted income housing. Yes, sir.
What's the difference?
Section 8 deals with the way the voucher system is set up, and that's completely different than this program. This program is privately owned, the apartment complex itself. Now, when I say privately owned, it's developed privately. The actual owner of the project will be the Housing Authority of Granberry.
How much difference does the rent?
I'll have to bring up representative of the development company for that. I'm their engineer.
I think our city manager might have.
Let me just say that half of them are at market rate. We discussed this in the background.
I know, but we're in open now.
Ramon was there. We're not voting on the rate of the rent. We're voting on this plat. And so that's important. But I just want you to know that it's, half of them are market rate. The other half are based upon the income level of the people living there. There's different tiers. And the lowest of the low, there's only one apartment in that range, if you'll recall. And so it goes up from low to market rate.
Chris, I think you're absolutely right, but I bet if you asked the people who live next door to it, none of them knew that.
Well, we've discussed it here before. Here's a consultant.
Hello, my name's Greg Wright. I live to the south. I'm president of Josiah States HOA. The property development group did come and talk to us. We asked if they could build a fence along our northern border of our neighborhood of Josiah States. They turned it down. Also, we've asked for them to plant bigger trees than the four-inch, because like y'all were asking, will they be able to see down into our neighborhood? And they are. And we've got Say Court in our neighborhood that backs right up into their development. So that's something that we were worried about is natural landscape barriers, so we're not peeking into people's bedrooms at the lower level in Say Court and Josiah States.
Can we get your name and everything so we get it on record here?
Yes, sir. Gregory Wright. HOA president of Josiah States.
Councilmore, discussion?
Since you come up here, are you for it or against it?
That's a hard question. We're about 50/50 in our neighborhood. You know, a lot of it scared us because of the income restricted stuff. We had the Islands HOA come over, and they had to ask some questions about it. And they gave us some insight on the apartments that are just to the north of them behind Walmart. And they haven't had any problems with their neighbors. But they also don't qualify for a low-income restricted apartments there either. And so what we're really worried about is if we're allowing income restricted on the Water's Edge corridor, what is that going to do to the property value along that street? Traffic. There's also, I think, 140 homes and Harbor Lakes Phase 5 that's coming in. So we're worried about traffic, property value, and peeping toms.
I would like to just add that it's also a senior living facility. It's not for all different ages, so.
That's why we're split 50/50. We're not worried about.
It's like the Charter House project that you mentioned. It's going to have, you know, various income levels. Yeah, there is an opportunity to try to help some folks that are low-income.
Yes, sir. And, you know, the 50% of the neighborhood that's split on that understands that. And with the age restriction, I think it'll keep a lot of the trouble out that comes with apartment living. So that was really our main concerns was those four.
Thank you. Counsel, any more questions for these gentlemen or Scott? Councilman Reiner?
Really quickly, what is the age restriction so that these folks know?
55.
55 enough. I actually do have another quick question. This might actually be for Mr. Coffin rather than this gentleman, and more in general question about the traffic impact analysis that Mr. Vale was asking about. Have we done a traffic analysis recently?
No. And Scott, I'll let you talk about that. We've got, somebody standing in the back room waving?
Okay.
I'll try to speak more clearly.
Actually, we were fortunate enough to have our engineer who reviewed this here in the audience. If you don't mind, I'll just defer to the reviewing engineer.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm David Winn, city engineer. We did not require a traffic study on this particular development. It actually generates less than what single-family would. So if you have 46 units, 48 units, you're generating somewhere on the order of 300 trips per day. And that is just not a, something that'll put a stress on the system. And a trip is defined as a trip in and a trip out. So you have probably 150 people going out and 150 coming in.
So what's the trigger for an impact analysis?
We don't really have one here in Granberry as far as a number goes. Other cities, if it's less than 500 trips, typically they do not require a study. If you get over 500 and up to 5,000 trips per day, many of the ordinances say they may require a study. And then over 5,000 trips per day, they do require it.
And what's the cost on something like that, just for?
Oh, I don't.
Does it vary?
It probably would vary by the complexity of it. You know, you're probably talking $3,000 to $7,000, something like that.
The reason I'm asking this is because I'm wondering with our, waiting on 377 to get that expanded, I wondered if that would be, if those types of reports would be helpful to put a little more urgency on Tech Scott to get our roads fixed for future. So that's why I was thinking.
I'll just tell you, my long-range plan for Water's Edge is, once we get the project built, you know, it's all built out Harbor Lakes, do an impact analysis on Harbor Lake and Water's Edge, just to see what we need to do as we go forward. There may need to be additional lighting or stop signs or striping, reconfiguration of what we're doing now. But really, we need to wait till we see the development.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Counsel, any more questions? As Scott had mentioned here, we're going to make, it's going to be a three-point, yeah, motion here. We'll go ahead and make a motion on the item number three, which is the approval for the site plan. So I will entertain a motion to approve the said site plan.
So move.
I got a motion by Councilman Corgan.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Wadley. Any more discussion on the item number three? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
And all ayes except one nay. That is approved. The next one is the public hearing for the preliminary plat. Counsel, any more discussion on that one, item number four? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said preliminary plat.
So move.
I have a motion by Councilman Reiner.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Corgan. Counsel, any more discussion on the said preliminary plat? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Once again, one nay, Mr. Allen. That is approved. And as pointed out by Scott, we will make a motion, entertain a motion to accept the onsite detention design as presented by the developer's engineers and recommended by the city engineer.
So move.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Wadley. Counsel, any more discussion on the detention?
I have a question on that, Mayor.
Mr. Allen.
What's the flow of water going to be in it, select the range we've been getting, Scott?
Again, if you don't mind, Mr. Councilmember, I would like to defer to the design engineer for the developer.
Sure.
And I'm sorry, could you repeat that question?
What kind of flow are y'all looking at to come in there with all the ranges of stuff we're getting?
The, let me get to that sheet here.
I'd just add that our design standards require it to meet 100-year floodplain requirements, but we'll see what.
Yes, we, it's designed to handle the 100-year. And I don't have the study with me. It's, we designed the entire system to release rate less than the current release rate is as a grass condition. The detained water is being detained up to the 100-year event in a manner that we're, obviously have more runoff as we've got more impervious area. But the volume we have available to store maintains the release rate at below what the current 100-year release rate is in the 100-year storm and so on and so forth in lower storms. We've got a weird outlet structure, meaning W-I-E-R, not weird in general.
It is 100 years, what you're?
Yes, sir. We've designed for the 100-year event, yes, sir.
Have you seen that, Scott?
We don't review engineering plans. That's why we hire the experts at Breeze and Nichols.
Takes a lot of luck.
And let me also add, the reason I've recommended that is the system that they're tying into in Josiah States, when they designed that, they designed only for an undeveloped track. And so what the engineer's proposing will bring that, the impervious area that they're back down to an undeveloped flow on the 100-year storm.
Any more discussion, counsel? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That too is approved. Thank you, Scott. Thank you. Our next item, here again, is a two-part item. We're going to combine number five and number six. We have a public hearing considering the following request for the Granberry Baptist Church. We're going to consider a FIA, a replat, and also an SUP. And I'm going to call upon Scott to give us some background on that, if you would please, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel, Mr. Manager. We have a two-item agenda request with a facilities improvement agreement as a sub-tier in kind of the replat application. You may remember this particular piece of property. It was recently voluntarily annexed into the city, the western portion of this. The eastern portion of this is approximately four acres, which is the developed site for Granberry Baptist Church, is approximately four acres. The residual portion of that was outside the city, brought into the city. The proposal is to replat the property and bring that other four acres located to the west into the planted area, creating one developable site that can be permitted for the expansion of church activity. But until that time for expansion of church activity, what's being proposed at this time is CDI Head Start would like to put a daycare center there as one of the locations on the site. And I do believe I have a site plan showing where that may be. There we go. So there's a brake line in the middle of the property. So the top is coming from Weatherford Highway. You tie into the brake line and then continue on with the southern portion of the property. And you could see the proposed daycare Head Start facility highlighted in blue that's located to the northwest of the property. Also incorporated in that is the expansion of the parking to support the development as presented by the applicant. Okay. As a part of this particular application, we have variances to 31E and 410 to not approve Weatherford Highway. We have a variance to 39 and 45 to not extend a eight-inch central sewer line through the street frontage along Weatherford Road and being Highway 51. We also have a variance to Section 48 to utilize. We also have a variance to Section 48 to utilize the existing wood power poles instead of replacing the wood power poles with the lights, with the steel poles, which is a part of our requirements. We've seen these occasionally on some of the older developed areas where the public streetlights have the old wooden poles instead of having to take those down and put the metal street mast in. Regarding the CDI SUP, per our ordinance, the zoning ordinance, this is currently zoned interim holding. The current ordinance requires an SUP for a private daycare facility in an interim holding district. Again, this is a private daycare facility that's really not tied to the operation of the church per se. If it was, then it would be part of the church activity. Since it's separate, possibly under a lease agreement, an SUP is required. We have elevations of the building, elevations of the building that's located to the opposite side of your screen. In essence, this is a modular building that's gonna be put on site. They're pre-engineered and they will meet the masonry requirements and tie the masonry. And you can see the stone wainscote wrap around the bottom portion of the property. What they're presenting also meets the parking requirements under our zoning ordinance. As a part of the SUP process, we're required by state statute to mail out notices to adjoining property owners. We mailed out eight. We also published in the Hood County News as required by state law. As of this time, we've seen zero letters, either in support or in opposition. The Planning and Zoning Commission deliberated on the matter and they recommended by unanimous vote of seven to zero, approval of the SUP for the daycare in the interim holding zone. They also recommended approval of the variances as presented by the applicant and approval of the replat as presented by the applicant. Mayor, Counsel, I'd be happy to entertain any questions you have.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing, so at this time I'll open up the public hearing on item number five and six. Does anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Hear none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any question for Scott or staff on this item number five or six? Hear none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said FIA with the said variances.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen and a second by Councilman Wadley. Counsel, any more discussion on this FIA?
Yes.
Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Next item was the approval of the said replat. Counsel, any more discussion on that item? Hear none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said replat.
So moved.
I got a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
And a second by Councilperson Ryder. Counsel, any more discussion on the replat? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Again, that is approved. Next item would be the said SUP. Counsel, any more discussion on the SUP as presented? Hear none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said SUP.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen and a second by Councilman Corrigan. Counsel, we've got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That SUP is approved. Our next item is a public hearing, item number seven, is a public hearing to consider approving a request of Gary Platt to replat a lot R, 3R. I'm gonna turn this over to Scott Sobchek to give us some information on that one, if you would please, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel.
What we have is an application that we've seen before. This is the Beehive Assisted Living Facility. What had happened on this particular replat is, once Counsel approved it and all the subsequent variances that were tied to this particular replat, the property owner and developer never filed it for record at the courthouse and it's since expired. I do want to make a sidebar comment that city staff had courtesy calls one or two months before the expiration date to inform them of the expiration date. We did go out of our way to make them aware of it and provided them emails to that effect. So, but nonetheless, it's still expired. So this is, in effect, the same replat application that we've seen and voted on with the same supporting variances. This is located in a heavy commercial zone, roughly 2.5 acres. It's been zoned heavy commercial since 2001. It's proposed to be subdivided into two lots. Again, it's to support a medical office and assisted living facility. The site plan that was presented that was tied to the replat application as a part of the prior one is still in effect with the maneuvering areas and the fire lanes. There are some infrastructure improvements, the water sewer streets, sidewalks. That's why you don't see an FIA tied to this particular replat, because we still have the FIA and the surety on the books, but we still hold the $87,000 to secure the development here. It's good for two years. This expired after six months, so the FIA is still good, is still in effect. And all the inspection fees, we still have as well. So we're creating lots 3R1 and 3R2 from lot 3R, hence the replat. We're abandoning some easements as a part of this and we're dedicating new easements that are tied to the proposed replat, site plan being presented. We do have variances tied to this. We have a variance to 31I of the city subdivision ordinance to not improve our escrow funds for half of the cost of Acton Road. They are putting a note on the plat, which will be conveyed by title to any subsequent purchasers at such time when the city schedules a CIP project that they'll own up to half of their costs of the roadway improvements along the street frontage for Acton Road. We also have a variance to 39 and 45 to not extend an eight-inch sewer main through the entire street frontage along Acton Road. The existing sewer line runs east-west along the north property line to this particular piece of property. You also have an engineer's letter recommending approval of the two variances as presented by the applicant and also recommending approval of the replat application. Your planning and zoning commission voted, concurred with the applicant's request, voted by unanimous vote of seven a's, zero nays, to support the request as presented with the variances. Mayor, I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open the public hearing up to the public. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Hear none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions for Scott or staff on this item?
Mayor.
Councilman Corrigan.
Scott, is there, you know, if there's a reason that it didn't get filed? I mean, are we gonna be back here in six months doing this again, or?
I can't speak for the applicant. All I know is, from our standpoint, we really did a good job of customer service and I like to compliment my staff for reaching out a month, if not two months, and sending emails. In fact, when the developer on the East Coast found about, out about them not submitting the MLRs for filing at the county courthouse, we sent him our emails to their engineer that they just, for whatever reason, dropped the ball. So we did everything we could.
Do we know if they're here tonight?
I don't know if they are. I don't see them in the audience.
I mean, I'm excited about it. I wanted to pass. I just, I don't want it to have to keep coming back.
Right.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Mobley.
Scott, there, when this came to us before, there was substantial conversation about sidewalks. Can you remind everybody kinda how this will be addressed?
Sure. They, there's a bar ditch along Acton Road and after the sidewalk variance was denied, they yielded. In essence, the site plan has a sidewalk internal behind the bar ditch, internal to the property, connecting the west-east property to the north property as it loops around Acton Road. So there is a sidewalk for connectivity all the way through the property. Part of that discussion is, we can't put one behind the back curb. There's no curb there. And then we have the bar ditch, so they put it on the interior side of the bar ditch. There is no variance to the sidewalk standard here. There is no variance to the streetlight standard here that we saw in the past because they were wanting to use those small bullards as well. So no variances means they meet our city requirements.
Very good. Thank you.
Counsel, any more questions for staff or Scott? Hear none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said replat with the said variances.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Corrigan.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Mobley. Counsel, any more discussion on this item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Once again, that is approved. Item number eight, is a public hearing to consider adopting ordinance number 1925, approving a request of John McManus for an SUP. Scott, once again, I'd like to call upon you to give us some background on that, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel, Mr. Manager. What we have is a request that's located just off Business Boulevard, north of US 377 and south of Old Granbury Road. It's just past the split, east of the split on Business Boulevard, traversing to the north. And it's the property adjoining the stone sales lot area off of Business Boulevard, just to the north. It's a little over .4 acres, zoned heavy commercial. The applicant has submitted a site plan showing that they're meeting the parking requirements, which requires nine stalls. This is the elevation of the building. They're not expanding the existing building footprint there as a part of the CO process. They do have to put 30% stone. And you can see the stones, wainscote on the bottom there. That's probably from a previous tenant that had to meet that 30% standard. A lot of the areas given by those big roll-up doors that you see on the front of the elevation, it is, it is secured, so you can kinda see the wrought iron fence. Our zoning ordinance, you can see, requires on the matrix, a SUP under heavy commercial, site plan is required. He did present the site plan. May not be located within 300 feet of any property zone for residential use. Our city staff checked into that and validated it. On April 4th, city staff mailed out six public notices to adjoining property owners within 200 feet in accordance with state statute. We also published in the Hood County News, as of tonight, zero letters have been received in favor and zero have been received in opposition. Your planning and zoning commission deliberated on this particular agenda item and have recommended a vote of seven, zero, to support the application with a one-year term limit as a condition, evaluating it based on performance. Be happy to entertain any questions, Mayor.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open the public hearing for this item. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Hear none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any discussion, any questions for Scott or staff? Hear none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said SUP with the term limit of one year that has been presented.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Allen.
Second.
And I have a second by Councilman Corrigan. Counsel, any more discussion on this said SUP? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Our next item is item number nine, which is a public hearing considered for the following request of Cameron Commercial LLC for an FIA and a final plat. Once again, I'm gonna call upon Scott Sobchek to go ahead and give us some information on that, would you please?
Thank you, Mayor. What we have is an application. We saw this as a preliminary plat. This property is located off 377, just to the east of the Starbucks in the new Kroger Center. So you can see that that property is bisected on the aerial by house, but the proposal is to demolish that. And we'll make sure that prior to filing that plat application, before creating that property land, that the demolition permit and that house is being scraped from the site. We don't want any encumbrances. The size is a little over .4 acres and it's been zoned light commercial since 2001. It's currently in abstract and survey. Preliminary plat was approved in 2018 with the variances. There's no variances tied to this particular application, again, as presented with the preliminary plat. What's being proposed for this site is an AT&amp;T retail store. There is a site plan and you can see a particular note that there's an easement that kinda wraps around just to the east and ties into 377. We saw that on the preliminary plat that incorporates the remaining balance of that property as a part of the preliminary plat. There's gonna be a shared driveway access, so that's why you see that off-site easement coming back around and tying into the property. That'll be a separate instrument that'll be filed with the plat application. We got word back from the city engineer that the, and Techscott, that the, Techscott has already approved that driveway permit for that location. The existing structure, again, is to be demolished. It's in United Cooperatives Service Area for Electric. As a part of this plat, these were the variances that were associated with the preliminary plat. There are no variances tied to this particular final plat as presented. Your planning and zoning commission deliberated on the matter and recommended by a vote of seven a's and zero nays to approve the plat as presented. Be happy to entertain any questions, Mayor.
Thank you, Scott. This is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open up the hearing to the public. Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. Mark Priestner, Planning Concepts, Tyler, Texas. I'm here on behalf of the developer and be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. What was your name again?
Mark Priestner.
Okay. So Counsel, we have a representative. If anybody else in the public wishes to speak, go ahead and stay up there if you want, Mark. Hear none, I'll close the public hearing. Counsel, do you have any questions for Mark or Scott or any staff members? Guess not, Mark. Thank you. Counsel, hear none, I'll entertain a motion. It's a two-part also. Here, I'll entertain a motion, first of all, on A, is to entertain a motion to approve the said FIA as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Mobley.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Wadley. Counsel, any more discussion on the FIA? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved. Second part of this was the final plat. Any more discussion on the final plat, Counsel? Hear none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said final plat.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Corrigan and a second by Councilman Allen. Counsel, any more discussion on the final plat? Hear none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That too is approved. Our next item is item number 10, which is our second public hearing for the involuntary annexation of five different sections here. We had our first one today at noon and now we're gonna go into our second required public hearing. With this said, folks, I'm gonna allow our city staff, Scott Sobchek, to go over the timelines and what this means and all these, on these different items here. And then we'll open it up for the public hearings to the public. We will have a clock of three, three minutes to speak and try to keep those items on there within the three minutes there. And Counsel, if required to answer any questions, we'll try to, but if none of those questions are, none of them are able to be answered at that time, we will definitely get back to people and make sure that we get that information back to them because we have it on record. We also livestream this, so if you wanna look at this on livestream, review it again. Also, this is the second public hearing, but at any time you wanna come up to City Hall and talk and discuss this items, these items on this annexation with the staff or even the council people out there, then you can get, contact them or myself and we'll be glad to get you the information that you need and also the staff down here at City Hall. But like I say, a lot of this, this whole presentation will be online also, so it'll be available to you at that time. So with that said, I'm gonna go ahead and open this up to the staff. Scott or Chris, do you want Scott to go ahead and give this? So Scott will be giving the presentation right now. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel, Mr. Manager. The public hearings for the annexations were kicked off by a resolution, Resolution 1912, which initiated the annexation proceedings and directed the city staff to construct the service plan to support the proposed annexations of the five sections that you see here. The April 2nd date also set a time and date for the two public hearings, that being noon today and 6 o'clock today, these particular public hearings. Annexation is very procedural. Once you kick things off initiating the proceedings, then you have a certain timeframe whereby you're required to hold these public hearings. And then after those public hearings, there's a cooling period. In essence, you have to wait between 20 and 40 days before the city council is presented with an adoption ordinance regarding these annexations in order to absorb some of the commentary based that they received here at these public hearings. As a part of your agenda packet, we've included excerpts from the Comprehensive Plan on Why Cities Grow or Why Cities Annex. These typically include but are not limited to, they allow cities to manage adjacent land uses and corridors as gateways in and out of the city. They allow for cities room for planned room to grow. They provide public health, welfare-related services. They also allow cities to gain highway frontage and help plan to relieve growing transportation issues. This is all codified in the most recent adopted 2016 Comprehensive Plan. Regarding these five areas, we, as, after the April 2nd date. Regarding these five areas, we, as, after the April 2nd date, after the resolution to initiate proceedings, the city staff, the day after, mailed out all the notices to all the joint property owners who are impacted by this annexation. The city, as a part of the budgetary proceedings, we hired a surveyor, did all the deed research at Hood County Courthouse and the appraisal district, found out who was an impacted property owner, got the tax roll information. And also as a part of that research, our surveyor included and vetted out who had a tag, ag exemption or wildlife management exemption on the property. Sections one through five comprise a total acreage of 2,470. Out of that, 2,470, approximately 72.2% of that, or 1,783 acres of that, is available to submit an ag development agreement as their ag exempt property. And I'll touch on that in a little bit. Go into the weeds a little more regarding each individual section on how the splits are. Section one has five residential properties on 341 acres. That amounts to 68.2 acres per dwelling unit. Section two, two residential properties on 800 acres, which amounts to 400 acres per dwelling unit. Section three, four residential properties on roughly 455 acres. That accounts to, amounts to 113.8 acres per dwelling unit. Section four, three residential properties on 537 acres, and that amounts to 179 acres per dwelling unit. Lastly, section five, 14 residential properties on roughly 335 acres. That amounts to 23.9 acres per dwelling unit. The sum total of all these, even those, these are individual sections and they're treated as such with individual adoption ordinance, but the sum total is 28 residential homes on roughly 2,470 acres, which amounts to 88.1 acres per dwelling unit. So this map also shows to the best of our ability to graphically depict those areas that are without ag exemption, and those are highlighted in yellow, and those that may have the potential to file a development agreement under an ag exempt status with the Hood County Appraisal District. And after the second, April 2nd meeting, after the property owners were notified, the following subsequent day, we also mailed, after we got the, our roll of information from the appraisal district, who had tax exemptions or ag exemptions, and we mailed development agreements, boilerplate development agreements to these properties. And what that offers up to each of the holders of these ag exemptions or wildlife management exemptions is the opportunity to execute that, sign that, file it with the city, and have them stay or retain their property with ag exemption outside the city for a period up to two, 10 years, I'm sorry, 10 years, or until the property is subdivided or development-platted or develops as defined within the development agreement. The property can be conveyed to an immediate family member or a trust held by a, the property owner or a family member. But as long as you don't trigger one of those events that is codified in the development agreement, then you can stay outside the city and remain outside the city for that 10-year period, again, until it develops as defined. So we're looking at roughly this 2,470 acres of area that was being considered for annexation, that the non-ag exempt property amounting to a little over 600 acres immediately being brought in if the city council at their discretion votes to approve annex all these as presented. So as a part of working on the service plan, your planning staff submitted a memorandum to all the department heads, that being the police, parks, fire, building permitting, and inspections, and public works, those that have skin in the game in this service plan. And we inquired whether or not there was any cost associated with bringing these territories into the city. Again, the service plan is divided up into maintenance and capital expenditures, and so we see a summary of their response here. Police stated that the proposal will have no impact on the department's ability to provide service at this time. They issued the caveat, but as these things develop and grow and the more properties brought in, the chief did say that this developed property would be a topic being brought up during discussion deliberations. Parks stated that additional right-of-way brought into the city would add an area of three mowing events, adding roughly a little over $3,500 annually into the parks budget. Fire stated that there would have no budgetary impact on the department's ability to provide the service at this time. Building and permitting and inspections likewise. And then Public Works stated that the additional right-of-way brought into the city would add roadway maintenance area into the budget, roughly $29,000 annually. In sum, for the maintenance aspect of the service plan, the total immediate cost for those sections one through five would require an annual budgetary increase of a little over $32,500 per year. They also responded in kind with regarding to capital expenses, that being, for example, police for vehicles. Public Works responded relative to water and sewer extensions, any kind of new roadways or major roadway costs. And all the department heads responded, stating that there would be no capital expenses needed at this time. Again, this is couched on the previous slide, that a lot of this property is expected to be maintained as ag exempt rule outside the city, that these property owners would file their development agreements, and roughly 600 acres would be brought in, now this 2,400 acres being proposed. The service plan was submitted as a part of your agenda packet. I know the city has recently, I believe, put these service plans and adoption ordinances online for public viewing as well. Again, these are split up into maintenance and capital expenses. The first portion of this is maintenance. You can see the language here at the present time. You can see these soft services, like solid waste collection, maintenance of roads and maintenance of water facilities. You can see that the maintenance provision also acknowledges for those rural areas that have, for example, wells and septics, that they can maintain those in good standing with the adopted state and city policies, TCQ, if you have a water well or a septic system, the state and local, i.e. county and city standards, if they would be brought into the city. Services to be provided effective date upon annexation. Again, this is part of the maintenance requirements, publicly owned facilities, we're not aware of any out there. And then, of course, parks, properties brought in are part of the park system, part of the city. Capital expenditures, we went over that. No major capital expenditures being proposed by any of the departments insofar as the submittal of this particular application. Let's see, the development agreements that we submitted out to the property owners that do hold ag exemptions or wildlife management exemptions, they come with a cover letter stating that the deadline date for submittal of these would be May 31st. Now, what we do is hold those, once we get the signed development agreement from the property owner. We hold those and place those in a file, and we await the outcome from the city council on whether or not they approve the adoption ordinance. As a part of the submittal for the development agreement, it's required that you go to the appraisal district and you'll have a tax certificate that shows that you are ag exempt property in good standing either for agricultural or wildlife management, and that's tied to the development agreement as an exhibit to the development agreement. The city will pay the cost of filing those if in the event that the city chooses to go forward and execute these. I do want to mention that the resolution that the city council passed on April 2nd also authorized the city manager and his department to receive these development agreements and execute these development agreements. So, but again, we won't execute those until after the council deliberates and acts on the adoption ordinance for each of these five sections. I believe that's all I have, Mayor.
Are the development agreements due by the end of the month also, or is that?
May 31st. So they were mailed out the first week of April. The property owners have had a little under two months to review the documents. They're about five pages. I do also want to make mention, if they have any questions, hopefully we're able to address any comments that they have. I know we've been able to work with already a number of property owners that come in and ask questions. We also have a file where we're starting to collect these. We have notaries, the signature page that does need to be notarized. We have notaries here at City Hall, so we'll be happy to notarize those for free as a part of the city services. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Scott. Like I said, the second part of this process is go ahead and open this public hearing, or public hearing for the citizens out there. And we do have some that have signed up, and I'll just go ahead and start these in no order. First speaker would be Mark Franco. Just, if you would, step up to the mic and introduce yourself with your name and address, and then we'll start the clock.
My name is Mark Franco, and I am speaking in regard to the property located at 4102 Glen Rose Highway. I am the land development manager of Red Cedar LLC, which owns 84 acres in section four at the previously stated address. I'm also the continuous improvement manager at Propel, which manufactures and refurbishes equipment used in the oil and gas industry, and leases the buildings located on the 84 acres from Red Cedar. We oppose this annexation. Our tract is located more than one mile from Granberry proper and is connected only by a small strip of road right-of-way. City water and sewer are located a long way from our property. It will be an expensive project to extend those lines within the two and a half years required by the municipal act. The taxpayers of the city should not be forced to bear the burden of this cost. We appreciate the city granting our arbitration request pursuant to the Municipal Annexation Act. The site plan I have to hand out shows the first phase of our development. Red Cedar and Propel's plans, since it purchased the property, has been to develop the site with similar buildings and uses. We want to be sure that the city is on notice of our development plans, which include continued construction of the buildings under the Hood County Building Codes and the Development Regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you say you have something to hand out? Why don't you leave it with the city secretary, make sure that all the council gets that. Thank you. Our next speaker, I'm sorry, is Richard Huffes. Is that right?
Close enough.
Oh, okay. I just call you Richard all the time, okay?
Works for me, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Counsel, Mr. City Manager. My name is Richard Haves. I live at 428 Riverbank Lane. My wife and I relocated to Granberry approximately two years ago, following extensive search for the place we wished to live. When we were searching for a house, it was very important to me that it would be within the city limits of Granberry because I wanted to receive the services of the city. For example, I cannot make major changes to my house without a building permit, which at first glance sounds like a detriment, but it does bring value to me. Before the permit is issued, the city will ensure that the contractor is registered and has adequate insurance. More importantly, at key points of the project, an inspector will come and make sure the work is done correctly.
Timer, I'm sorry. We forgot to start the timer.
He got some freebies there. Go ahead.
I don't plan on using all my time, so we'll be fine.
Go ahead.
The city, or Hood County, is growing very rapidly. I recently read it's the ninth fastest-growing county in these United States, and some of that growth is coming to Granberry as well. It's reasonable to expect that some of that growth will happen in these areas that we're considering for annexation. Since the growth is inevitable, I strongly prefer that this council manage that growth for two reasons. First, this council puts the interest of the city of Granberry first and is answerable to the citizens of Granberry. Therefore, I request that the council do proceed with annexing these parcels and request the council vote for this. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Laura Grisham.
Good evening, city council members, Mayor. My name's Laura Grisham. I live at 3130 Glen Rose Highway. I own a good portion of section four in the map that you see. And although you can't see it because of the section four, there are, two of the rooftops are mine. They will be under city taxation. As you can see, even though they are under city taxation, I will not be receiving any of the benefit of the city. I am concerned, first of all, with the description that the map gives us. If you can see where it makes the curve down in the lower left-hand corner, that cuts through a 50-acre tract of mine. There's no definitive meets or bounds descriptions. Outside that, if I decide to build something at that point, I don't know whether I am within or without the city limits. My biggest issue is the number of acres that will be taxed because there are no meets and bounds descriptions. My question to you is, will there be a survey done of what you propose to tax us on? If so, who's responsible for paying for that survey? Secondly, I have acreage to be sold that juts out into Comanche Cove and Heritage Heights. It will be divided into 10.5-acre tracts. The state says that you do not have to plat a piece of property if it is under, if it is over 10.5 acres. So I don't have to file a plat. My question to you is, if I were to sign the agreement that y'all have proposed, and I sell one of those tracts, since restrictions follow title, will my potential buyer be entitled to accept the same agreement that I have made with you? If not, if they're immediately taken into the city, then what is the timeline that they are to expect that they will be provided city services? Because I, as a seller, need to be able to tell them that. I guess that sums it up. As I said, my biggest question, my biggest problem is the fact that we will be taxed, but we will not have any representation. I'll be subject to codes, ordinances, things that the city demands that I will never receive any benefit from. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mayor. Our next speaker is John Henry Luton.
John Henry Luton, I live at 3879 Dunn Court, which is not anywhere near so far your proposed annexation. Our family does have land that is within the annexation. I'm not here to complain about that. It almost makes sense. But my first concern is can the city furnish sewer and water to these outlying areas? And you already have a one-mile ETJ. Why do you need to annex it to exert control over it? You already have control over it. Section four, to me, makes zero sense. Section five makes very little sense. And the north two-thirds of section two makes no sense. But I was here at lunch, and I was pleased to hear that the city is going to take care of Jackie Martin's pearl hog problem. I'm guessing whoever said that has no experience with pearl hogs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Luton. As I stated, if you hadn't filed a card, if there's anybody in the public that would still wish to speak, then you come up to the microphone and speak, but make sure you leave a card with our city secretary so she has on record who you are.
I filled out the card this morning. Do I need to fill another one out for this?
That's up to my city secretary here. Carter, are you going yes or no? Yes, she said yes, so I would advise you to do that. Yes.
I'm David Cook, 410 Conchery Creek. I'm with the Granberry Association of Realtors. It's good to see you all again. Mayor, council members, I just wanted to reinforce that our association- Mayor, council members, I just wanted to reinforce that our association believes that forced annexation is un-Texan. Property owners deserve the right to have to say in whether their property is annexed. Our association supports legislation that extends statewide the right for the impacted residents to vote on whether their property is annexed into a city. In addition, providing property owners the right to vote empowers them to make decisions for themselves rather than have the local government decisions forced upon them. Like I stated this morning, there were nine counties in the state of Texas that overwhelmingly supported the Tier 2 system and which would give these property owners the ability to vote to be annexed. So I would implore you to wait and see what the legislature will do. So thank you for your time.
Mr. Cook, go ahead and make sure you present your card with our city secretary. Is anybody else in the public? Okay, we got one more. Here again, make sure you get a card to the city secretary.
Yes, sir. Jamie Cornwell.
Who?
Jamie Cornwell. And my family owns in Section 2, I don't know the exact address. It is under ag exemption currently. And I just have a few questions. I 100% agree with David Cook. I think that we should be allowed to vote and have a decision and have a say in the process. As far as my questions are concerned, I guess my number one question is, what prompted this involuntary annexation? Is it something at the state level that is coming down, and now you're trying to get ahead of it? Just curious as to what prompted this annexation at this time. And I guess the other question is, what is the problem with them being in the county and not in the city? What has, have people had problems with water quality, with no access to electricity? I know we haven't, but I mean, what is causing? Are there people complaining that want this to be in the city? I guess, again, that goes with what prompted the involuntary annexation. The third question is, you say for 10 years, you can maintain your ag exemption as long as you don't build anything on the property. What happens after the 10 years? Are you automatically annexed and you have no opportunity to continue to be in ag exemption? And then my fourth question would be, how much tax, how much in taxes do you guys actually expect to get from this? You're saying it isn't going to cost you a whole lot, but what are you going to gain? And then as property owners, what are we going to gain? It seems like it's stacked in the wrong place. And based on the clapping earlier, my guess is that no one really wants this annex. I don't know if we can have a candidate.
Ma'am, direct your question to the council, please.
And I guess my last thing is, you're all elected officials, to my knowledge, and I think you should work for us, not for tax purposes and to make money, more money for the city. I think Granbury is doing fine. I grew up here. This place has grown like wildfire, and I think it's growing too fast. I mean, have you been on 377 during the day? That's crazy. We're way behind, and to go and start doing more, even with some of the other things that we've, you guys have laid on the table today, it just seems crazy that you want to build more and you want to grow more. I mean, this is not the small town that I grew up in, and I think it's sad.
Make sure you do the sign-in sheet for Carla.
I got my notes on it. Kind of give it to you after this.
Okay, okay.
Randy Fleming, landowner in what is proposed Section 4. And our questions, some of you I have discussed earlier today, some of the questions we have, there are some others. We just need some clarification on some of the information before we go into any kind of agreement or contract with the city or any kind of arbitration. One of the issues was, and I think this is going to be, obviously, everybody's going to know that water is going to be a big issue in the future, and we're going to need to address that now with a contract with the city. And like I say, I don't expect to actually get an answer tonight. If someone does, that's great. But the questions I have is, what will happen to my well if annexed into the city? Is that become the city's well now? Can they dictate who, what, when, and where the water goes to? Or would that still just be my well? As they take in the city, takes in other properties and stuff, are they required to cap their well and use as city services, provided city services are available, which we seriously doubt at this time? And something we talked about earlier this morning was the annexation of the developments around a lot of the property. If someone, this will kind of answer a lot of the questions out of here, other people asking, why are we not annexing those developments? And I think there's a real simple answer to that if the council or the mayor or the city manager wants to answer that quickly. That was one of the big issues most people I talked to had was, why are we not annexing the developments in and around all the proposed annexing areas right now? Okay.
I will tell you, there's several areas there that by, because of the rooftops, number one, and you know, how many is there, and also, some of that area is annexed, it's just not color-coded because it's under, and it's like in the ag exemption right now and being developed.
Most of the ones that are around our property in general are not.
On number four?
And yes, are not actually in the city limits. There's, you know, Comanche Cove and.
I think our city manager has an answer for that.
Yes, sir.
It was a question this morning.
Right.
So would you name a specific neighborhood to me so we could?
Spanish Trails, Heritage Heights.
Okay.
Scenic View.
Okay.
Rock Harbor. Places like those do not appear on.
Those were private developments, and we typically don't want to annex subdivisions. Those are done, developed, over with. They should have been annexed when they went in and started, but they provided their own water, they did their own things. Some of them get water from the city, but some of them just don't want to be annexed, and it would take an election under the current law for those to be part of the city. And so if they want to be part of the city, all they got to do is come ask for it, and they haven't.
Petition.
So they have to petition. But we just can't do what you're calling a force or we call an involuntary annexation on subdivisions with 99 or more homes. Anything over 99 homes requires an election. Those people have been communicated with, and most of them anyway, about if they want to be in the city, they need to come talk to us. Just like the little example of the shores area right there behind the State Farm Agency on 377. If you look at that, that's not in the city limits, never has been. They put in their own water distribution system. I learned today how this all came about, but they've never been annexed into the city. They don't have sewer, they have septic on those lots, and for the city to take over that and put in the municipal plan would be cost prohibitive. There's not even value to either party for us doing that, other than they benefit from not having septic systems.
Do you see value in annexing the property now for the city or for?
The raw land, yes. Not the old developed land. You know, a good example of what we're trying to prevent is a subdivision like one of our premier subdivisions in the ETJ, take Mallard Point. They don't have adequate firefighting suppression in their water lines. The fire hydrants are actually painted black. And if you live out there, you know what that means. Possibly, maybe you don't. But you cannot tie a fire truck onto that black painted fire hydrant and get water out of it, put your fire out at your house. We're trying to prevent that in the future. As it gets developed, we get the infrastructure in place, and we work with the developers to do an organized development. We also have a master development plan that has been adopted in 2016. This is for everybody to understand. This just didn't happen overnight. We've been working on this since 2016, looking at what needed to be developed and where the growth is. A lot of these places, there's been people already to our office kicking, knocking on the doors, seeing about what it takes to develop in these areas. It's not just, oh, let's draw a line on a map and annex it. This has been a thoughtful, well-planned, laid-out progress. And so the idea is to impact as few homeowners as possible, and as the development continues to come to Granbury, we'll be able to handle that growth in areas. We want your house, when it gets built, to be inspected by inspectors and be built to meet the International Building Code. We want your plumbing to be installed by a licensed plumber. We want your electricians to be licensed electricians that build your structures. That's not happening in the county, folks. It's just not happening. And we're afraid that it's going to have a negative impact on our community, so.
How do we have access to the plan, the proposed plan? Or do we have?
It's on our website.
It's on our website.
It is on the website. 2016 plan?
Top-in comprehensive plan in the search bar on the homepage, and it'll take you out to it.
And like I stated earlier, that we have that on that website. We have this, it's live streamed. You can watch it over and over. You could come up to City Hall and request it, and they will give you the presentation, they give you the plans and stuff like that, so.
So the comprehensive plan, for instance, everybody's picking on Section 4. It shows a thorough through there for an outside loop around Granbury. And that's very important to us, is cross connectivity, being able to get traffic off of 377 and around town. As it develops, we need to ensure that we have that provision in our land use plan. And so that goes to part of the development standards that would be required, so they come in and develop it.
And that's why we're so concerned, because three-quarters of that loop would be on the Bowser Ranch property that we're talking about in Section 4. And just as a side note, the notification dates of when the documents went out for notification, we had some questions about that, what dates we actually received them, and we can discuss that later. And going back to the master plan, I know Granbury hasn't been, it doesn't seem to have been very friendly to industrial development in our areas. Looking at the map and stuff like that and seeing that's right adjacent to our property is an industrial, you know, development, what is the plan for the cities? And are we going to exactly, you know, lay out a place for industry to come in and try to control it that way? Or are we just going to ask case by case for industrial development?
We do have an industrial park within the city limits. That particular development chose not to build in that area and went outside into the county where it's unregulated and unzoned and decided to build there.
Now, that's the area on 377?
No, this is.
On the loop.
The loop.
Oh, it is on the loop.
Commerce Center of Granbury is on the loop.
Right.
There's 450-acre tract land with a mile of railroad track right for industrial development, and we pitch it every week to somebody. Just hard to get them to come to Granbury.
Okay.
But we do have a lot, would be happy to visit with you. At your leisure, just come by, set up an appointment with me or Scott, and we'll walk you through whatever information you may need.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Can I go ahead and answer a little question?
Hang on, hang on. Do we have any more speakers? You want to do that now?
Yeah, can I?
Let's go ahead and answer a couple of questions here.
Let me go ahead and answer your question on the well, because you may all have that same question. As Scott said in his presentation.
Go ahead and make your way up.
Scott said in his presentation, your well and your septic would be able to be used by you continually, so that's not a problem. You know, hopefully someday, when you need water, you'll be able to tie on to it from the city somewhere from some development that has occurred within your area. And everything that we provide in annexation, we're saying we have the capacity to meet that need, or we will when it develops. And so that's the process we're on right now. We're expanding our water treatment plant, we're expanding our sewer treatment capacities, and we're making room for the future. Thank you.
Wait, pull that mail.
Yes, sir. Got it. I'm Tori Proctor. My family owns land in Section 2 as well, and I did fill out one of these tickets. I just think it's important that we let you know we're opposed as well. Our land is definitely agricultural and has been for hundreds of years. I don't really see it ever going into the development phase. But I just, I think it's important, too, that you, and I know that Jamie has said it as well as David, but Texans really don't appreciate the forced annexation. There's what I believe are currently a bill right now in the House that could possibly be resolved by May 27th. Well, my family's in a situation, we've got a contract sitting in front of us that says we have to sign it by May 31st, and that's just saying that the city in 10 years will annex our property. Our property should be in the family for, my mom and dad's intention is for it to be in the family for years, and that is going to have us in the city. So I just think it's important that we know that we also are opposed.
Thank you. I think I had another speaker there.
I have a form also. My name is Diane Hacey, and property owner in Section 2. You know, we're older people, we're retired, probably not great at looking at contracts and stuff. So when I got that contract, I thought, well, we can sign this and get it postponed for 10 years, and then 10 years we'll get to review it again, because it's not that clear, and we didn't necessarily have time to get a legal representation like the Granbury City Council and city has had times to get a lawyer to draw up things. I think that it would be only fair to give us a little bit more time so we could have somebody review and look at the situation. We've worked hard for what we've gained, and to have somebody else control what's done on it instead of us having say-so over our own land, to me, is really sad. I'm really just requesting that, I mean, Johnson County, Parker County, all the surrounding counties have already approved to let property owners vote. I don't understand why Granbury wouldn't do the same thing. We've had the land in agriculture. We're trying to let our kids enjoy the land and for somebody to just come in and say they're definitely going to annex it. But one thing I really don't understand is if we do sign that contract, if we do sign that contract, then I've been told since I, my plans were to sign it, but I've been told that if we do, then we're automatically annexed. And I don't think that's fair to do that to us without letting us have time to have a lawyer or different legal representation look over it like y'all did.
Thank you.
I appreciate it, and just requesting that y'all consider.
Hello, my name is Erin Drummer. I live at 703 Mallard Point Drive. I have your form filled out. I wasn't planning on speaking. I don't like doing this. My personal property butts up to Hidden Oaks Golf Course, which is part of Section 2 that is being annexed. And our concern is, right now, there's been HB 347 that's been passed by the House, and that is regarding the tier system and to allow for voting for annexation. And the reason that we're concerned about it is we're trying to obtain information. One of the things that was presented here this evening is the impact cost-wise for the annexation. And I know presently there is a contract on Hidden Oaks Golf Course, and that is to be developed, is my understanding, into a subdivision. And we are trying to obtain information on what that proposed development is. And my question, I guess, is why the rush? Why all these people have been asking for time? And, you know, appearances, you know, that's what matters, I guess, is the appearance. And right now, it appears that this is being rushed through, and the only thing that I as a property owner can come to the conclusion is, this is something having to do with development and maybe like, for instance, the contract that is on Hidden Oaks Golf Course. And we're trying to find out, I sat here earlier and listened to all these properties and listening to what's going up against Waters Edge and Josiah Estates, and how is our property in Mallard Point, how is that going to be impacted? And I believe that it all kind of stems from this annexation proposal. So I'm just trying to get information regarding that. But it does beg the question, why now and why the rush when all these people are asking? And if it was approved, it was already approved by the House, if it was signed in, then there would be a required vote. That would be my question to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have another speaker? And like I said earlier, all these questions will be. And like I said earlier, the, all these questions will be identified. We're trying to keep up with all these speakers and keep, keep, keep track of the cards so that we can reach out and we can get these answers and get these questions answered for everyone. This is the part of the communication, I think some people have said some things about no communication. I mean, this is part of the process where the communication comes in, where we listen to the citizens, we listen to the folks that are involved and the council can take that and, and make their decisions also. This is, this is why it's called a public hearing. Sir?
Yeah, I'm Robert Simax. I don't read or write or nothing, but I got a place on Lapan Highway and it's acre and three quarters and they want to annex acre and three quarters.
Which section are you talking about here, Robert?
Five.
Five? Okay.
And that's.
Go ahead.
You know, that's the only problem I have. I just don't see why they would, all the houses around me, they ain't going to build nothing there. Because there's, this guy owns 40 acres, these people down the street all own and they got water around, all around us, but it ain't down my street. But I don't need no water. I got real good water and they don't need my water. That's all I have to say. I just don't think they ought to mess with my property because it ain't got nothing to do with nothing. If it had something to do with it, I'd probably say okay, but it ain't got nothing doing nothing. It's just one little spot right in the middle of all this and ain't nothing going on. But I think they ought to change their mind because I ain't the right type of person to be messing with my land because I'm like the Indians and the rebels and everybody else. I don't care. But they need to look at my property because I mean, it ain't worth, they don't need it because it's too much around me where it ain't got nothing. Now, all these other properties might be a little bit different because there's so many other places, but my property is right in the middle of this and they got signs everywhere. City sign here, city sign here, and they put another one right in front of my house. You know? I got signs everywhere. I can walk out in front of my house and look at signs because they're all over the front. That's all I got to say. I just want to let them know because I, everybody else is all these other zones. I'm that little bitty spot up there, five. I mean, it's this big. They won't do nothing with that much property, even even that acre and three quarters. They don't need it. And I don't need their water. I don't need none of their stuff. If I don't need their electric, I can get me a generator and run my electric. But I just want to let you know, I don't have nothing to do with that.
Thank you, Robert.
We own the property at 603 Meander in section two. We own the daycare there. There's three portable buildings. We already have city water and city sewer there required by permit to do anything with that. What of the city ordinances are going to go into effect on those buildings since none of them have stone or anything like that? We'll just have to respond to that.
Okay. I'll talk to city manager.
We're not familiar enough with your project to answer that question.
You have to take a look at it and we'll respond back to you on that.
Very good. And for record, yeah, we're, we're against it some.
Okay, thank you, James.
Thank you, sir.
Once again, I want to thank all the folks that showed up and your, your questions, your statements, your concerns will be noted and, and like I said, there's a, there's still a timeline here and the council is going to be taking a look at all this. They're going to get the information that they've heard today and tonight and, and take a look at it and will hopefully get back to folks. But if you have concerns and you want to come up to City Hall and, and get, and to talk to folks or get some of this information, it's here, it's here available. If you want to reach out to some of your council members and talk to them one on one, they'll, they'll be able to answer your questions. If they don't have the answer to those questions, then they will, they'll, they'll get back with you on those things too. So this is the communication part of this whole process and we hope everybody looks at it that way, that it's not something that we're, that we're so-called shoving down somebody's throats or telling them that have to do it. We want to be able to communicate with the community. We want to look at what's, what the annexation looks like for the future. So thank you once again for, for coming with your comments and questions. This was just a discussion item, so we'll move on next to the next item, which is item number 11, which is to consider approving the street system capital improvement plan of 2019, 23 to meet the city of Granbury future needs. And I'm going to call upon our city manager, Chris Kaufman, to give us a staff report on that.
Thank you, Mayor.
We hold off a little bit until people exit.
As people are exiting, we'll take a breath. Thank y'all for coming. Hey, Laurie. So one of the areas that we've really prided our city administration on the last four years is working on comprehensive planning and as witnessed by the water plan that we've adopted recently, the wastewater plan, the capital improvement plan for those. And also we've been looking at the streets. And as you recall, when you interviewed me, some of you that were around when I was hired, that was one of my first questions is what's the plan for the streets? Well, we now have a plan that we're presenting to you. It's been submitted to you in your agenda packet. We also have a hard copy if you'd like to take one home, it's in Carla's office. But we do, we did analyze all the streets and I'll turn it over to Rick to let him update you on what that looks like.
Thank you, sir. Mayor, if you'll let council members, Mr. Kaufman, tonight I want you to consider approving the street system capital improvement plan for 2019 through 2032 to meet our city's future needs. Earlier this year in cooperation with city staff, we contracted with public management system to establish and grade the inventory of our local streets and thoroughfares, determine the current system is meeting the, the needs of our transportation for our community, set some goals and also set a timeline for future, future projects to meet those identified needs and even possibly find alternatives for, for financing. This is a plan, this is, and all that that entails is not set in stone. It is a 10-year plan contingent on city council budgeting the funds necessary to implement it annually. So I'll get that up front. The street inventory information you have there includes right of way widths, pavements width, roadway types and, and conditions. I want to throw this up front too, that Granbury, we have a lot of text out right of way and that is by no means any part of this at all. Text dot takes care of their roads and we take care of ours. And I just say that because not everybody knows that, you know? I'm not, don't insult anybody's intelligence, but that is at the front of this plan. And as we all know, the traffic counts are up, way up in the Fort Worth district of Tex Dot, so the local roadways in our, in our community ranging with from 10 feet to 40 feet in some areas, the main thoroughfares are of course wider. Deterioration of any city street or any road for that matter has to do primarily with water, moisture and excessive heat, excessive cold and, and the city streets here in Granbury are in dire need of, of attention. There is also population increases and tourism here. We're, we're a growing city. In fact, we have a lot of high in tourism. Some of the types of improvements we have ranging all the way from pothole repairs to seal coat to mill and overlay and to what we're going to start here in a couple of weeks is a complete reconstruction of our, of our current plan. And those will be in the first four or five years of this plan will be complete reconstruction because some of the city streets we've outlined in this plan are in dire need of attention and have been for a long time. And the reason you do that up front and you pay that extra money to do that is the maintenance and the care lasts a lot longer before you have to go back and, and perform maintenance on that street aside from potholes and, and cracked ceiling that you have. Again, what we did, we ranked these streets, an inventory of, of good, fair and poor. They're outlined in the maps you have there in your packet and I have a larger map if some of you'd like to take a look at. We also used a case study from, for cities of our size and had tourism and, and money spent there and you can see those outlined. We use Fredericksburg, New Braunfels and Kerbel. And Fredericksburg being the closest to population size and tourism and what they spend annually on city street maintenance. And as you can see, it's around somewhere in the neighborhood of $800,000 annual that Fredericksburg spends. So it takes quite a bit to do this. A lot of cities, it's their largest annual expenditure. People that do this for a long time will tell you that if you don't have good roads in your city, a lot of times people will stay away. So what this plan outlines is a capital improvement schedule, routine maintenance, updating our roadway design standards hopefully in the future and enforce the city's ordinance on new developments. On page 11, we start there with the first six streets in our system this year in our plan. We're going to start as soon as schools add on June 3rd with Misty Meadows. Everything in our system this year is going to be reconstructed except for Brazos Harbor Drive is going to be a mill and overlay. And you follow it on down for the first five years, all these are going to be reconstructed. The identification of these streets is not necessarily scientific. A lot of these are based on need. A lot of people have asked us for many years to do something to these neighborhoods, for instance Brazos Harbor. And so that's one of the reasons these are on here. But most of these are well-traveled thoroughfares that need attention. And you will get down to approximately, after we get to James Road in 24, 25, you will see the process starts over in 25, 26. We go back to North Crockett, Misty Meadows, South Olson, we go back to Seal Coat. So about every four or five years, you need to go back and do this maintenance to expand and prolong the life of the street. So, and this does also run all the way through 2032. Our long-term initiative is to update the existing street conditions, contingent of budget funds for routine maintenance and minor repairs on the streets not listed and prepare a new street system capital plan for the years 20 to 2035. And again, this is not set in stone. This is flexible. It will always be flexible. But let's face it, conditions change, not only politically, but on the streets. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have, but it's a good plan and staff recommends approval.
I've got one, Mayor.
Okay.
What we're going to?
Councilman Allen?
We're going to do this in the budget in October, correct?
Hey, Councilman Allen, go ahead and use your mic.
We're going to do this in October at our budget.
Hopefully.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Have you got any, any plans on where we're going to get, I think it was a million dollars the first year?
He's leaving that to me.
Yes.
Chris, have you got any plans?
I'm planning on putting a million dollars in there again, like we did this year.
So we got it already?
No, we don't have it already. But what I've done is I've started taking our franchise fees that we get for street rental from various utilities and we're earmarking 100% of that to go towards street maintenance. And so that's, and then we have to come up with some more, but about quarter million more we'll get there. So that's, that's what we're working on. But really what I present to you will be following this plan as far as we can afford it. And I'm going to bring a balanced budget to you and there, there will be, if you adopt the plan, there will be an attempt to meet each one of these mile markers as we move forward.
All right.
If the funds are allowed, you know?
Yeah.
And then again, at the end of the day, you're the ones that adopt the budget and you can dictate where that money goes. So I just make recommendations.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Mobley?
Hey, Rick, could you look over your right shoulder? Now, this room was full before you hit that podium.
That's a clear message for me.
That's, that's all I wanted.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Council, any more? Discussion on this? You know, I, I think Chris hears it from me a lot and, and I think, and you touched on it, Rick, but we have got to step up to our streets because they're not getting any better and we need to step up to, we need to start seeing. I mean, I know we, we've put some patches here and there. We've got the seal thing that we've done and, but it's, it is not what we need on our streets. We've got many, many, and when you look at this one chart here, council, I don't know where it was, but there's a lot of needs improvements on those streets. I mean, it's a lot of red on there, so that, can't hardly see it, but yes, yes, that is this, I mean, that's just going to keep getting redder if we don't step up and do something here. And I think we've, I think we've actually put some of this on the back burner a few times where I, I am not promoting that. I, I think we should step up to our street repair because that's something for the pub, that's, that's for the people that live here and they deserve to have good streets to travel around Granbury on. And like you said, text dot takes care of 377, things like that, but our outer streets, the ones where our community travels around are getting in bad shape. So council, I'm going to, you know, I'm saying that we need to take a good, hard look at this. We need to make sure that we are, are addressing the needs to the fullest as far as the money that we need to spend to, to improve our streets. Council, any more discussion on this? If none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the said system, the said street system capital improvement plan that has been presented.
So moved.
And I've got a motion by Councilman Mobley and Wadley. So we have a motion and a second. Council, any more discussion on this item? If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. That is approved.
Thank you.
I think you're going to be staying up there though, Rick. Okay.
Yep.
The next one is consider adopting resolution number 1914, amending the city of Granbury's water conservation plan and drought contingency plan. Chris Kaufman, do you have a staff report on that?
Go ahead, Mr. Crownover.
Thank you, sir.
Take it away.
Thank you. In 2002, the city council adopted the city of Granbury's water conservation and drought contingency plan. In 2014, council approved the resolution to provide more stringent enforcement of the water conservation and drought contingency plan. The quantity of the water required for water use activities was reduced through more efficient water use practices and the drought contingency plan provided procedures for voluntary and mandatory actions to be placed in effect temporarily to reduce the demand placed on our system. Under the Texas Water Code, certain entities, including the city of Granbury, are required to submit updated water conservation plan and a drought contingency plan to the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality every five years. At the back of this packet also is the utility profile data contained in section two for all of our water customers and usage at the back of this packet. And the goals contained in section three and appendix C have also been updated. I'd like to go through first, if I could, I'll try not to, I'll try to be as thrifty as I can with the, the water conservation plan at the front of it, the utility profile, population projections through 2060 and the customer data in table three, the population and use projections. What you see there, what, what a lot of what we base this on is per capita gallons, per capita daily. What you see there is population in persons, water use in gallons. What we like to see is about 156 on retail customers. For residential, we like to see that about half of that, about 70, about 70 gallons per person. And right now we're pretty close to those figures. I'm happy to report. City council has, has taken large steps to upgrade our water treatment system. We're currently breaking ground on phase two to go to 5 million gallons a day through the water treatment facility and we've upgraded our distribution system. We currently have a little over 4 million gallons of storage, two, ground storage and about two and a half million gallons of elevated storage for approximately 5,500 meter connections. I know a lot of y'all know all this, but this has all got to be reported to the state and I'd like to just go over it briefly if I could. On the wastewater side, we're also upgrading our two million gallon wastewater facility located on Waters Edge and we're also about to break ground on the eastern facility down on Old Granbury Road of the million gallons. These are critical because the implementation that we scheduled, we have targets and goals for water conservation. Public works and utility building have worked hand in hand. The meters will continue to be monitored for accuracy annually and replaced on an as-needed basis. The water loss has been reduced from somewhere in the neighborhood of 15, 16%. We're down now to about eight or nine percent in the water loss category, which is huge. Statewide and national averages. Statewide national averages are around 10 or 11% water loss, uh, across the board, so we're in really good shape there. And, uh, we track these goals and, and these procedures, uh, with meter calibration, annual water audits, and, uh, we also have maintained a city leak detection program. Um, we have master metering that all metering devices use to meter the diverted supply within plus or minus 5%. And also, the city's goal for unaccounted water is 10% or less. And so, um, we also participate a lot in education and information. Anytime you come to City Hall, Utility Building, you will find all kinds of information for you. We, uh, mail out a lot of, of, uh, water information in mailers with, with utility bills, and we also, uh, put out press releases, and the press release will go out after we, uh, finish here tonight on this. Plumbing codes, we're up to date in the building inspections department, the plumbing codes that, uh, utilize low usage shower heads, toilets, drinking water fountains, and so forth. Um, and last but certainly not least, we're in coordination with the BRA, the Region G Planning, uh, Planning Group, uh, and that is also provided in the appendices. Uh, I think before I move on to the drought contingency plan, I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have. Uh, but we're doing a good job of conserving water here in Public Works.
Counsel, any questions for, uh, Mr. Crownover or Chris?
And I might just add that, uh, we added leak loggers, um, with our meter system.
Yes.
Which helps us identify water main leaks well before they percolate to the ground level. So that saves us a lot of, uh, water, but our water loss ratio being around eight percent still equals millions and millions of gallons of water that we're losing. So we're constantly working on that. Jason and his team have really done a great job with that metering program, rolling that out and, and helping it. There's even been people at their homes have been of benefit from that website access to see how much water they're consuming, and they find leaks that they're able to take care of, they know they have them. So I just want to go on record, go on our website and log onto that, and it will send you text message when you're using excessive amount of water. And, uh, it's great because we don't want you wasting water either.
I've got a, I got an email Monday where my water was spiked up.
Yep.
Yeah, and sure enough, I went out Monday, turned on my sprinkler and I had a head completely off, big head, just pouring. So, uh, that's good.
Yeah, it is. It's a, I've said several citizens have commented on it. Rick, I've got a question. You mentioned the, uh, the wastewater plant of two million gallons a, a day capacity. What happens if we get into the, as we get into the water plant of five million and we reach over the two million or whatever, and we still, and we'll definitely still be operating in our old waste plant of only two? What goes in must come out. If we're, if we're, if we're putting out more water than we could produce through the, uh, current plant, until what time we get our other one? Is that?
We hope to get them some. We're gonna start both these projects almost simultaneously, almost simultaneously.
You mean phase two? I thought we were working on phase two right now for the water plant. I mean, to, to get up to the five million gallons.
We're gonna start on the wastewater plant hopefully later this year.
So you think they'll go, they'll, they'll go in together? Okay.
We're not gonna use more than what we produce, but the thing is, is most of the water, uh, is used for irrigation purposes.
Okay.
And industrial, maybe car washes and stuffs like that, but they re-treat their water and use it the best they can, but, um, yeah, that's.
Well, when you mentioned that, I just never thought about, you know, because that'd be in a two million gallon wastewater plant also.
What we're doing is we're preparing for that growth when it all hits.
Yeah, understand that.
All these new houses under construction are gonna be here in about 18 months, so we need to be ready. And so our plant, you know, isn't operating at capacity on, on Waters Edge yet.
Right.
It's, it's close. I mean, it's those, those percentages that require us to move forward with the other plant. But we still got some cushion there to accommodate some of the growth.
Okay.
And, uh, yeah, it's gonna be a challenge to get it all built in time.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Mobley?
Rick, you know, we made it through the drought with, with a lot of pain, and I wondered, could we look at other cities and see how they modified some of the standards, uh, landscape standards to get ready for the next drought? Because we know it's coming. We don't know if it's about to start or if it's gonna be 10 years from now. But wouldn't it be smart to kind of get ahead of that before, instead of requiring somebody to plant 30 trees, let's find a number that's workable so that we don't have to water the trees during drought situations when we don't have the water to water with?
Exactly.
So have we looked as a, as a staff, have we looked to see what, because we don't need to reinvent the wheel, but have we looked at other cities to find out how they're modifying their standards so that we can get ahead of that? Because just as you want to stay ahead of the water and sewer requirements and, and needs, as a council, I'd like to do that so we don't handcuff ourselves with some ordinances that require these things that may not be sustainable going forward.
We sure can, and, um, where I moved from, we had quite a bit of experience with that. Zero escaping and, and out in the desert, to look at different ordinances, landscaping ordinances such as that. So I guess we can sure do that.
And if you go, if you go to some states that have it much harder than us.
Right.
Well, like the state of West Texas.
Exactly.
That, I mean, in, in Phoenix, I mean, there's a lot of rock, there's a lot of natural structures there, but not a lot of trees sticking up in the parking lots, and it still looks nice. And I'm not saying we go to that extreme because, in my opinion, we'll always have more water than, than that area.
Hopefully.
But, but yeah, we can, we can at least look to them for ideas on how we can, we can change things here and, and maybe be, you know, one of the, one of the, the cities that other people look to going forward on how we do, address it, and they can do that too.
Okay.
Chris, I thought we did that whenever we did that landscaping.
You did.
Then across the street from Mesquite Pit. Going into a drought type plant.
So what, what Councilmember Allen's mentioning is, uh, the landscaping that the beautification council paid for across from Mesquite Pit that our Parks Department installed, um, that's what you call zero escape. And that, that, you know, requires no sprinkler system. And so, um, we, just so you know, our, and correct me if I'm wrong, Scott, but our ordinances require every new home to install a sprinkler system, and, um, uh, and that's part of it. And so we're requiring grass to be planted, and, and we're not giving them the option for zero escape.
You know what, we, we should change that and have them put a rain cutoff on every house. That way if the rain's a half inch, it don't work. You're not wasting water.
Right now, that's optional, yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead, go ahead, correct me.
I may jump in. So we did actually amend and modify our landscaping requirements to allow for a credit system for drought, um, sensitive type issues. So, for example, rather than use the pop-up heads to use the bubblers, they get a credit for it and a reduction from the 20%. Uh, the rain sensors.
Yeah.
If they, uh, install those for commercial properties, then they get a reduction below the 20%. So certain measures, and we use model ordinances in other cities around the metroplex, and this was maybe three or four years ago. So it is somewhat dated, uh, to be truthful. You know, there's nothing wrong with going back out there, but we did, uh, allow for those credits for drought contingency type applications to say, no, you don't need that type of landscaping, you get a reduction. We don't want spray on the sidewalk. If you're able to give us a plan and manage that and, and show that you're not wasting water, you're reducing water, um, that's a part of our current ordinances. So you hear 20% all the time. You can actually reduce that down to, I believe, 12% with these contingency measures that a good landscape architect or an irrigationist can help design the system in order to get those reduction credits. And we, as a staff, um, we try to promote that as much as possible.
Well, uh, what I'd like to see, Mr. Mayor, what I, what I'd like to see is that instead of just reducing it, we minimize it. And it's just semantics, but, but it would mean more if we could minimize the impact because like I said, if somebody builds, and Mr. Allen can back me on this, if somebody builds a house when we're in a drought and they're required to put so many trees and watering shrubs, if you don't water those more than we as a city can afford for you to water, they're all gonna die, and then what do we do? We can't make them replant them because they already have the CL, am I correct? They can cut them all in the ground the day they move in.
And that hap, that happened in our last drought. It did, it came up.
So that's my, that's my question. There's gotta be a way to, to deal with this in, in a long-term vision as opposed to, as opposed to just dealing with it when we're in the drought. Because I think long-term effects, if we can have everybody use less water day to day to day, starting now, when, when clearly water is not a problem right now.
Right.
But again, we know, we know it's coming because everything's a cycle. So I'm not asking for an answer tonight, I'm just saying, you know, looking forward, that might be, uh, that might be part of our vision. Thank you.
Counsel, any more discussion on this item? If none, I'll entertain, entertain a motion. I think, I think the whole council's sick tonight, I don't know.
He's giving you a conversation plan, but we hadn't talked about the drought contingency. There's some regulatory information in there you need to know about.
Let me, uh, I know it's been a.
Okay, go ahead with that.
Mr. Mayor, I know it's been a long night and I'll be brief.
No.
The drought contingency plan.
I've been here all day.
Took the timer on in three minutes.
I've been here all day, don't worry about it.
I know I talk too much. Um, really the only changes that were made to the, uh, drought contingency plan and the reason for those changes was on the triggering mechanisms, and those are based on statistical analysis of our system, and we, we have better capacity, as y'all know, with the water treatment plant. We've upgraded some of our, some of our wells and we're just better equipped now to, to handle it better. If you look at the, on, uh, page 11, the stage one mild water, uh, shortage conditions, uh, before, uh, when the daily demand equals, uh, two, 2.9 million gallons for five consecutive days or four million gallons on a single day, last year that was 2.2 and 3.0. And so, and on moderate, it was, uh, 3.3 and 4.1 for this proposed one. Uh, last year was 2.5 and 3.1. So we're a little bit better equipped. And on severe, um, for this one is four million gallons as opposed to three million last year and 4.3 million gallons on a single day and 3.2, um, on a single day. So, um, by and large, and the critical water shortage, uh, for seven consecutive days and emergency water conditions, uh, and also it still, it goes into effect when our storage tanks are below a level of eight feet, and, uh, those continue to decrease for four hours. And so, um, we don't ever want that to get there. And it goes into the water rationing that we can implement if necessary, whenever the storage and the capacities get below those critical levels. Hope we don't ever have to do that. So, and the response stages talks about what were the achieved goals we're trying to get at, the 25% reductions, uh, 35% reductions, and then also talks about water use restrictions, what you can and what you can't do. So, and some, uh, later on, it talks about some enforcement issues that we also have.
Your minute's up. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Good job.
Counsel, any more questions for, Ms. Crownover or staff here? If done, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolution number 1914 amending the City of Granbury's Water Conservation Plan and Drought Contingency Plan.
So moved.
I have that motion, uh, Councilman Corrigan?
Second.
And a second to Councilman Allen. Counsel, any more discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That is approved. Once again, thank you, Rick, for that presentation, and there is a lot of good reading there for the council, so there's a lot of information there, I see. Item number 13 is consider adopting ordinance number 1926 granting a franchise agreement to Waste Connection Lone Star. Chris Coffin, I will call upon you to give us a staff report on that one, would you please?
Thank you. I would like to introduce David Barrett with, uh, Waste Connections, uh, kind of come up to the podium, and Ava Gregory, our finance director, they've been working on updating our franchise agreement for solid waste for quite some time. Uh, this isn't an easy task. The Waste Connections is the name of the company that's been providing the same service to us for decades. Uh, it's changed a few times, but now we are under new ownership with Waste Connections as of 2016, and we've been working on this franchise agreement ever since then. So thank you for coming tonight, and I'll turn it over to you and Ava, mostly Ava, I guess.
Good evening, um, mayor, council, city manager. Uh, as Chris mentioned, we have worked the last several months with, along with David Barrett with, um, Waste Connection Lone Star to, to, uh, arrive to this franchise fee agreement. There were a lot of, uh, and of course our city attorney. I, I cannot leave him out because, um, Jeremy was, um, very instrumental in helping us review the agreement as well. So, um, we made sure that, um, first of all, let me start with that, that, um, Waste Connection Lone Star has been, um, the contractor for the city, uh, as far as I know, since 2001. The name have changed over the years, but it has been, um, the same contractor the city has been using since 2001, and there have been very small, little changes as far as to the rates. Um, we have had a franchise agreement with them since that time, and, um, it had expired in 2015. We have reached out to the contractor and have been, um, working on extending or renewing this franchise fee agreement, and we finally arrived to where we are today. Um, the agreement will be for five years with, um, automatically extending for another five years on once it expires. It will allow the contractor to provide, um, collection and disposal of solid waste within city limits. The contractor will be billing for all commercial services, and the city will continue billing for all residential services. In total, the contractor will be paying the city 10% franchise fee for all, um, all services, residential and commercial. And, um, I'm trying to remember what, everything I want to mention. Um, the fee for commercial has not changed. The last page of the agreement shows exhibit B that, um, includes the, the fee schedule for commercial. The contractor is asking to increase the fee, uh, for residential, um, about $4 and increase it to 1286. Um, and, um, based on that, I would be more than happy to answer any questions you might have.
Let me add something to that.
Okay.
Part of the driving force for that increase is the recycling, the curbside recycling that they provide to citizens. Uh, we've, we've talked about this internally, and we felt like it was important to continue that recycling service even though there's not a market for it right now, and it's a punitive program to collect it and for them to take it to the disposal center. But they have agreed to, uh, develop this rate and implement that and continue our existing service the same way that we enjoy now, where there's a recycled cart at, at every house that asks for it, and then, uh, they come in and use that for recycling once a week. So it's curbside pickup once a week. It doesn't have to be sorted out, it's what they call single stream recycling, and it allows you to recycle more than you actually put in a landfill if you're a normal household. So, um, David, you want to talk about any of that to us, uh, the recycling end of the deal, because obviously that's driving the cost increase.
Well, and, uh, the City of Granbury is actually one of the larger, uh, volume recyclers as far as the percentage of the city that actually participates in the program. But back when we started these programs, we would get a rebate from the facilities that we took the materials to. Um, currently, we're paying, uh, $46 a ton to take it to them now, and they're projecting that that cost is gonna go up to about 85 before the end of the year. So where we used to get money for taking it to them, now we're having to pay that 85, and to take our solid waste to the landfill, we're currently paying $34 a ton. So it's a real upside-down market. It, it's not just here, unfortunately, it's pretty much around the world, certainly all over the United States, and, uh, a lot of people are facing that same problem.
So what's gonna, what you're gonna see different that we haven't been doing is the roll-off containers will now need to be through Waste Connections anywhere in the city. We're not gonna have 10, 15 different roll-off companies using our streets without paying a franchise fee. We're gonna. paying a franchise fee. We're gonna narrow it into one, one source, and those, those fees are listed in your fee schedule as well.
And I know this has been a long process, but I really wanna thank Ava for everything that she's done. She, I know she's put a lot of time into it, and we've gone back and forth and back and forth on this, so it's long overdue.
Ava has made my job easy on this project, believe me. We appreciate it.
And I, I appreciate y'all putting this before you tonight.
And, and David, you've done a, you've done a good job for our community relations, you might say, or the, or the contacts, because I know a lot of folks in the community have probably called you on your own phone, because you told me one time, say, hey, don't worry about it. They, they got my phone number, that's fine, I'll pick it up and I'll, I'll react to their, their issues and stuff. So, you know, and, and Chris has been reacting to them, too. So, I think a lot of the, the community have had, if they had issues, they've got them taken care of in a, in a, in a quick time. So, we appreciate what you do out there and, and getting the trash picked up, so.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Uh, the recycling will go on downtown area. I recycle now, all the wine bottles in the arena, all the wine bottles in the line. I've been asked for other restaurants that I recycle. There's, my little car is full twice a week with wine bottles, and I, my neighbors are letting me put it in their recycling bin. I can't send out anything. Are they gonna recycle downtown?
We are gonna do a program downtown with the 96, or 65 gallon carts. Um, I guess, I don't know if you wanna go into that a little bit more. Um, we're, we're gonna provide the carts, uh, on the same collection day, uh, in the downtown area.
So, um, what we are doing, um, we have been doing residential recycling, but, um, Waste Connection agreed to, um, do recycling for small commercial businesses, as long as they have the container. So, that's an extra service they can capitalize on if, um, that is something they wanna do.
So, they could see where that point of delivery is and, and deliver it at that point, right, or whatever?
Well, all the people that are interested in doing that.
Okay.
Uh, we're not gonna just, you know, go out and just start delivering carts. Uh, if people call in and request that service, then we'll take the cart to them at that point.
On the square.
On the square.
Uh, I think that's what we're talking about, right?
Yeah.
I've got a question about that, Mayor.
Councilman Allen.
David, thank you. Been great for eight years since I've been on. Your company's been just outstanding. And Ava, thank you for, for helping David out on this. But I do have a question. Our residential went up $4 roughly, but we're still cheaper than anybody else around, if I was looking at those numbers, right, that you showed us last time.
You're very astute. That's true.
All right. Now, what I don't understand is, though, you got small businesses, and you're going up $2, and you're going up a dollar on the larger businesses.
That's Ava's rate schedule you're looking at.
That's what, huh?
That's Ava's rate schedule you're looking at.
That's not the sked, rate we're gonna be voting on?
Yes. But those are, that's the next agenda item, but that's included in your packet, yeah.
Okay, but can we discuss them now, or you don't wait and discuss later?
We can discuss them when, when it gets there.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Counsel, any more discussion on the, uh, adopting the ordinance for the franchise agreement? If none, I'll entertain a motion to, I entertain a motion to grant the franchise agreement to Waste Connection Lone Star Incorporated for the purpose of collection and disposal of solid waste and recyclable material collection of the City of Granbury.
So moved.
And I have that motion by Councilman Allen?
Second.
And a second by Councilman Corrigan, or?
Of course.
Any more discussion, counsel? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That is approved. Now, moving to the next item, item number 14, consider adopting ordinance number 1927, amending Article 1.50 fee schedule of Article 6.0 garbage and trash of the city code. Chris Coffin, you have a staff report on that?
Yes. Um, Ava is ready to give a report on the rates that we're proposing.
Thank you. Um, with this agenda item, we have reviewed our code of ordinances and, uh, reviewed some of our, um, articles and made sure that we are updating our fee schedule. Some of the rates were still included in Section 602 regarding garbage and trash. We removed the fees from there, and you are able to see that on the ordinance, the red line ordinance that I have provided. So, based on the solid waste franchise agreement we just approved, we have gone in and reviewed our fees that we are charging our citizens for, um, residential collection, and, um, that's the reason you see that rate change from 1057 to 1486. We also wanted to note that while the city bills all the residential, uh, billing for trash collection, and Waste Connection bills all the commercial, for all the commercial, the city also bills for the square. So, the downtown square is set up in a way that right now, currently, we have 12 dumpsters staged all around the square, and each vendor of the square is able to use these dumpsters. The dumpsters are picked up four times a week, um, and are monitored very closely by staff, and the businesses are around the square are classified as small business, large business, uh, small restaurant and large restaurant. We have spoken to David, and, um, we do understand that restaurants generate, the trash they generate is much heavier because of the wetness than, um, you have a small business generate. So, we included, um, classification for the, for all of these businesses, and we, the reason the rate has been changed, um, from what we build, it hasn't changed since 2001, is because if you look at the schedule that Waste Connection has provided for us, that classifies how much they charge per weekly pickup, uh, the city would have had to pay about $4,500 a month to empty 12 dumpsters four times a week, and we only have been collecting enough for $2,500. So, we wanted to start, um, making a small, very small, as you can see, we are changing the rate for small business from 36.18 to $38. So, we still not gonna collect enough money to allow to, uh, for all those dumpsters, but we wanted to make an adjustment to get a little bit closer. So, the rate increase is still very low. Um, they would be paying a lot more if they would be contracting straight with Waste Connection. So, I just wanted to kind of share with you the thinking process on that. So, the rate has been updated, reviewed, and, um, based on the needs of the square, has been adjusted slightly.
What do you have down there, David, eight-yard containers on the square?
There's a variety of, um, there's a variety of sizes, it just kinda depends on where it's sitting.
But if it's an eight, six-yard, you're still gonna dump it four times a week, and how many people's gonna throw trash into that, Ava? That we'll be billing, or y'all be billing?
So, um, we meet on exactly, we know, uh, where businesses, uh, which dumpsters are using, depending on their location, so they will be using the closest one, and we try to accommodate, uh, the square. So, we have had added a lot more dumpsters. I think originally, they probably started at like with four, six dumpsters, and now we are up to 12. Couple of the businesses have their own dumpsters, like Babes have their own dumpsters because of their size. Um, but, um, as far as the size, I mean, they kind of vary, but they're all, all pretty, pretty large. Um, they are picked up Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and Saturday, and, um, they are monitored by city staff. So, if there's a need for, um, for them to be picked up, whether it's during event or a heavy weekend, then we are able to contact Waste Connection and ensure that they are attended to.
As a business owner, and if I had a eight-yard container dumping four times a week, and I was being charged 300 and roughly $50 to do that, and they're getting by with it down there for, for $60 a month, or 85, it's not real fair to rest of businesses. And, and the reason y'all are using that is, is 'cause we haven't been charging them. Y'all don't wanna shock them?
No, we have increased it, so we are getting closer to what we need to be paying for all those dumpsters. Yeah, that's the reason we have increased, increased it, because before, before this increase, we were not even getting close to what it costs to dump 12 dumpsters four times a week. So, that's the reason we have adjusted our rate.
She showed me three scenarios of, of how to get there, and I chose this one, because it's an incremental approach to getting where we need, instead of just a shock treatment to get them there overnight.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that.
Two, $200 for a large restaurant is, was gonna shock them when they were paying $60?
Yeah.
And so, I went with this one, this scenario, to try to get us on the right track, and there'll be more increases in the future.
The city paying for the difference of that?
Yes. So, from 2001, it's grown that much. The business, the, the demand for the solid waste is higher now than it was on there. We've got more dumpsters now, but the rates have always been the same for each, as the, as the building is occupied. The change, the change of occupation has happened, and we just never, you can't, you can't fix everybody's problems in, in one week, you know?
Yeah, but if, if we stay at the end of red here, what are we gonna lose a month?
We're gonna make it work with Waste Connections, they're working with us on this.
So, we're not gonna lose money?
Right. They're being very generous with us to help us do this.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Mr.
But I appreciate your perspective in seeing that, which is important for people to realize. We are subsidizing the waste collection and cost of disposal on the square for businesses. But that's just one more avenue of why we're so great.
Those people already left.
They don't think we're so great.
Wait, Ava, you, any more?
She acknowledges she.
Uh, only if you have any questions.
Counsel, is there any more discussion or questions for Ava or City Manager Chris?
I had to rescue her, 'cause she didn't wanna tell the whole story about the three options that she came up with, so.
Okay. With that said, we'll entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 1927, amending Article 1.50 fee schedule and Article 6.0 garbage and trash of the city code.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilman Wadley, and seconded by Councilman Mobley. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That is approved. Item number 15 is to consider approving a beach, pardon?
I said, thank you.
Oh, okay, you're welcome, you're welcome. Item number 15, consider approving a beach safety solution by selecting from options utilizing a combination of beach monitors and fencing. Once again, I'm gonna call upon Chris Coffin to give us a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. As you will recall, we've experienced two drownings last year at the pool, which made us go into some kind of emergency measures. Uh, we put up a temporary construction fence along the area adjacent to the commerce, or the conference center. You can see the red line there. We, we secluded that area, we limited access, we monitored it during the day with our animal control officer, uh, just did the best we could with what we could do at the time to, to enhance safety as much as possible. We also installed, uh, swimming buoys across there to identify the depth of about five to six foot, and asked people not to swim beyond that as an attempt to save lives. Uh, through the, through the winter months, we've been working, and Aaron's been working hard to try to find competitive bidding for fencing material that matches the existing fence, and he's put together a proposal for us to consider tonight, that number one addresses a fence system that goes from the walking pier all the way to the existing fence as identified on the screen that you're looking at, and that will allow us to maintain limited access to and from the beach. Number one, we want to also have what we call a beach monitor. They are not a lifeguard, they are not a police officer, they're just walking around. If they see alcohol, or marijuana, or any other kind of illicit activity going on, they're gonna have their walkie-talkie, and they're gonna call the police. They're not gonna interact with those people, they're gonna have to deal with that situation. So, we're, we put together a budget to staff those part-time seasonal employees, and we also put together a budget for the fencing. So, you've got some options here, do A, B, C, or none of the above, but we need to make this available to you as quickly as possible before the summer is in full swing here. So, at this point, I'll turn it over to Aaron to go over his information with you.
That about sums it up, thank you. Now, uh, Chris is correct. Um, we have been working, trying to, uh, find a way to keep our beach a family-friendly environment. We all know that it's gotten more and more popular each summer. Um, it is hard to enforce the rules and regulations there without someone on site. You know, the, the police, they can't stay down there. Um, they're extremely busy. They come by there, um, when they can, but, uh, this option gives us, uh, monitors, someone there to call the police if they do see issues, like Chris had mentioned, and also, uh, we can have monitors at the gates to check access. Um, this fence would have panic bars on all the exits. The last thing you wanna do is confine a large group of people in a fenced area without, uh, exit points, so they would be able to leave, just not re-enter. Um, we would plan on having the main entry point on the east side, the conference center parking lot, that's where the tiki hut is located. Um, we do have this broken down into shifts. Uh, I don't think we would want anyone to have to stay out there for, you know, 12 hours straight on that beach, so we'll break it down into four-hour shifts. We've already started getting applicants, um, interested in this position. Um, and like Chris said, there are, there are options, um, fencing and monitors, no fencing, just monitors. So, with that, I'll take any questions.
How many monitors?
Um, we would recommend two at a time. If we build a fence, you need someone at the entrance checking coolers, making people aware of the rules and regs, then you need a, another person, um, kinda walking the beach from time to time, and when they do see an issue, maybe ask them, sir, that's not allowed, or ma'am, that's not allowed, um, and then call the police at that point if it doesn't, uh, if it continues. So, I would say at minimum, probably eight to 10 monitors, 'cause you're, if you have four hour, two people, and, uh, three, four-hour shifts, uh, a day, that would, it's gonna be a part-time mission, 'cause no one's gonna wanna work all three shifts. So, eight to 10 employees, start now.
And I commend the efforts to, to go ahead and be proactive, to go ahead and address the fact that that's, this beach is getting very, very popular, and we definitely do not want any drownings on the beach. We wanna make our beach safe, excuse me. But, uh, along those lines, too, with the fencing and the extra manpower, is there a possibility that that extra manpower can actually, I mean, I, I can't, it's, it's almost like a lifeguard there, which we don't wanna use that term, but is there possible that person could be responsible for picking up trash and, and doing the things that we obviously out, do on a day-to-day basis for the city beach?
Most definitely, yes. They would, that would be part of their duties. Um, walk, pick, keep the litter picked up, put in the receptacles.
The job assignment, or whatever it is, yeah?
Yes.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
We spend a lot of time, um, our staff spends a lot of time, especially after the weekend. You know, we have janitorial staff and staff that pick up trash, but the beach has gotten bad enough to where on Monday mornings, we may spend two hours down there, just getting it back in shape.
And I'm, I'm, I'm kinda looking at, you know, maybe, you know, looking over the restrooms, maybe even cleaning those. I mean, 'cause, you know, just patrolling up and down the beach, I mean, you know?
Right.
I don't know that, that, uh, but we, but we do wanna monitor it and make sure that we continue to keep it safe, and would, would these people have to be, uh, like here again, I'm not, I don't wanna get into, you know, putting a lifeguard there, but, uh, would they, they wouldn't be any required to watch the water week, okay?
No.
You see what I'm saying? You, you know where I'm going, you're right, to be certified?
That, the only thing I would recommend was if people are jumping off the pier, like, it's not allowed, just enforce that rule. Uh, or swimming beyond the marked buoys, try to enforce, enforce that, that rule. But, uh, if, if there is a drowning, first thing they should, or, you know, someone's missing, get on the phone to first responders.
So, so what would they be looking for in the beach area for something that they would have to report? I mean, horseplay, obviously, you know, you'd get a lot of that. I mean, what, what would trigger some?
We're talking bottles?
Yeah.
Beer bottles?
Okay, okay.
Marijuana?
Okay.
Campfires?
Yeah, alcohol.
That's it.
Drilling.
Those are the problems.
Cigarettes. I mean, we, there's beer bottles, there's trash cans are half of the beer bottles.
Yeah, we see, we, we see that when we clean up the beach, right.
They're not even set out there.
Okay.
And that contributes to safety.
Dogs as well. Dogs are not allowed to touch. Dogs as well, dogs are not allowed to touch.
That's why we're building the fence.
Let me ask something, Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Councilman Allen.
We put up the iron fence, and I know that one's been out by the road for, what, five years now or longer. Is there any rust in that?
There is a little, a little bit, and that's in this process for them to repaint that existing fence, and also, that fence was built too, there's a picture, it was built too high off the ground, and we went in after the fact and installed some trex decking because with that prevailing wind, it was blowing people's belongings, beach balls and floaties and stuff out into the street. The bid would include for that bottom section to be removed because it's, it looks like a snake now, it's all warped, and metal installed and repainted with that fence.
Have you looked at getting a fence on fiberglass?
On fiberglass? I have not. We were trying to match that existing.
You probably can still do that. If you go in Camlin Bay, there's probably six or seven now that's went into using fiberglass because it's rusting out at the bottom, and they come in, and one guy put a whole new fence up because of it, but the ones that hadn't got a fence were there putting up the fiberglass, and Buzz Fence, if it does, it's what worked, and I think it's about the same money.
I worked.
This design, I don't know.
Right. I got some pricing from Buzz Fence on, trying to get some pricing for this exact fence here, and it was not successful in getting what we were asking for as far as pricing goes. Even though the pricing I have is cooperative pricing, we did get three prices just comparative, and this one came in kind of mid-range, but like I said, the one you just mentioned, I never, we never could get on the same track as what we were wanting as far as our pricing.
What's the difference if you have a fence up or don't have it? They've got more area to cover or what?
If you didn't build a fence, you could still have monitors. Back in twenty-eleven, twelve, and fourteen, I believe it was, we had, we hired through a private security company, a beach monitor to patrol the area.
How'd that work out?
Well, they called the police, or me, a lot of times when there was issues, and I would turn around and call the police.
Do you think it's cheaper for us to do it ourselves?
Yes, I already checked it.
Okay. Chris, I mean, am I looking just wrong? It's a one monitor, okay, it's no difference if you've got a fence or don't have a fence. It's a hundred and thirty-two.
For the labor, it's the same. We're just budgeting a number, we're hoping that's going to be enough to staff it for the season.
Aaron, why don't you go ahead and talk about item number sixteen, because as we talked about these, they're going to go in combination here before we take any action here. Why don't you just discuss item number sixteen here, if you don't mind, Chris?
Sixteen is a separate agenda, but they do kind of, they're kind of tied together. Alex Omega is who we are comfortable with on this quote, and the fence quote is seventy-nine thousand, eight eighty-five, and that is to, that is a, that's a custom-made fence that is existing. It's called a loop style fence, and it's, you can't, we haven't been able to find it pre-manufactured in sections. So even though it would be made in sections, you can unbolt it and take it down if you had to get bigger equipment in there than we are allowing fencing for, or a section is damaged and you need to replace it, it is bolts, it bolts to the uprights. We do have five-foot gates, sixteen-foot gates, eight-foot gates, and I did reach out to Kelly with Bulls on the Beach. I sent him this drawing just to make sure he didn't have any issues, you know, because he needs access for his event, and he had, he did ask me to widen one gate from five foot to eight foot, and that's shown in this proposal, but he was in support of the fencing So there's an option down there for chain link, you'll see, for forty-five, six ninety-eight, but I would, in this area, I wouldn't recommend installing chain link, I would try to match the decorative fence that's out front, that close to the conference center. And this also would require a budget amendment, so it would be eighty thousand for the construction of the fence and twenty thousand for the recommended labor, the two monitors per shift. Any questions thus far? And then we've got another agenda item, talk about the hours of operation that we want to look at if y'all decide on these two.
We're happy to answer any questions you may have.
So Council, what he's talked about so far is just the consideration of, first of all, I mean, I don't know, that's a no-brainer to consider approving a beach safety solution. I mean, we definitely want a beach safety solution. I think everybody at the council here, we've talked about your recommendation, number one, a fence and possibly the onsite monitors to monitor the things that are going on around there, but that are not approved to do on the beach, and then to consider amending the budget to purchase the fencing. So the amending of the budget will not, let me get this right, the amending of the budget will not accommodate the monitors, because it sounds like we're going to end up hiring a couple more employees?
No, we're asking for a hundred thousand dollars in total.
Total, okay.
Eight thousand for the fence and twenty for the monitors.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. So we're asking to amend the budget to do the safety that you have presented to us, which is a fence and the monitors, right?
That's correct.
Okay. So Council, that's this portion of it? You got any questions or concerns to Aaron or Chris?
Mayor, how old would the employees be that you're going to hire? How old would the employees be?
Well, we can't discriminate based on age, but we're putting a number of eleven dollars an hour with the intent of getting college-age students interested, and again, we can't discriminate on age, but we're trying to find a more mature person. If that person is eighteen years old, then fine, but we're looking for somebody with some maturity that won't fall into the fund that maybe they're having there and lets something slide.
I guess where he's going with that one.
Worked out perfect.
Council, any more questions?
Well, I'll just tell you that staff recommends the fencing and the monitors.
Right.
That's the most aggressive, yes, iron fencing is proposed. That's the most aggressive measures I think we can take. If we wanted to go into having lifeguards there, you're going to need one lifeguard per every twenty-five swimmers.
We've already researched that.
And you would still need a gate, and so you need the fence regardless, but there is no way to logistically fund, in our small city, lifeguards for every twenty-five swimmers, one lifeguard.
We can barely hire enough guards around our city pool.
Yeah.
Right.
And it's what they call dark water, and it's a whole different training, a whole different learning curve. There's not anybody around here that teaches it, so.
We had a consultant years ago tell us if we did ever decide to guard that area, we would have guards on that pier, we would have guards floating in the water, and we'd have guards in stands on the beach. That would be the only way to even come close to guarding that large area of black water.
Okay. So Council, we've got a couple items on here, item number fifteen and sixteen. Fifteen kind of goes along with it, but we need to go ahead and, first of all, approve or consider approving a beach safety solution by selecting from the options utilizing the combination of a beach monitoring fencing. Do I have a motion to do that?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Allen.
I'd like to make a.
Councilman Mobley.
Thank you.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the beach safety solution with inclusion of the iron fencing and funding for two monitors during the season.
So we have that motion for the iron fencing and the two monitors during the season? We have a second? We got a second by Councilman Wadley. Council, any more discussion on that one? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That is approved. The next one there was to consider approving the purchase and installation of the fencing, so where we'd have to amend the budget to do so. So with what you've heard there, we'll go ahead and first of all, approve the purchase of the installation of the new fencing around the city beach with the said company here that we've got, Alex Omega.
Alex Omega.
Okay. And the second part of that would be to have to amend the, amend the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen budget to do so. So we'll do the first one there first, would be to approve the purchase and installation of the new fencing around the city beach with the said Alex Omega contract of eighty thousand dollars.
So moved.
I have that motion by Councilman Reiner.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Corrigan. Council, any more discussion on that one? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That is approved. Next, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion to amend the budget to spend that money, I guess, yeah. So we'll be amending the operating budget for the general funds for fiscal year two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen.
For a hundred thousand dollars.
For a hundred thousand dollars. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
So moved by Greg Corrigan.
Second.
Second by Councilman Allen. Any more discussion on that, Council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. And I think Aaron has one more item on here, item number seventeen, to consider adopting ordinance number nineteen twenty-nine, which is amending the park curfew hours for the city beach park. Aaron?
That's correct. And I don't know about y'all, but my grandmother always told me as a teenager, if you're out at midnight, you're up no good. So the current hours at the beach are from five AM to midnight.
Is she a voter?
She was what?
Is she a voter?
So we're looking at amending the ordinance to change the hours of operation of the city beach from five AM to midnight to eight AM to eight PM or prior to sunset, whichever is later. And the reason we added that is, well, for one, we have a current agreement with the Tiki Hut, and that's the way his agreement reads, that we want the water craft off of the lake at sunset, and you can actually pinpoint when sunset officially takes place on your phone or through the weather service, so you can actually know when to close the beach at sunset.
What's the hours of the Tiki Hut?
Eight AM to eight PM or sunset, whichever comes first.
Oh, okay.
Or it was later, excuse me, whichever is later.
Right, because sunset usually is after eight o'clock on some.
Yes, yes.
It's heavy into the summer, right?
Yes.
So Council, are you, I'm sorry.
That's it. It just makes it easier to enforce, and we would have, if we left these hours, we'd have to have the gates open and staff down there until, from five AM till midnight.
Okay.
And it's, I never see anyone down there at five AM or after dark unless they're vandalized the restrooms or.
Or the Fourth of July.
One of the questions, and it kind of pertains to some of the stuff that we've already approved here, but one of my questions would be, is there going to be, I guess it would be a posting of, number one, the new hours, and a posting that the beach is monitored through a.
Yes, we will, we will have the new hours posted on our rules and regulations. We already have everything that's not allowed posted all over the place in plain sight.
Because I don't want people to confuse this with, here again, a lifeguard on duty, which will not.
Right, we will keep our no lifeguard on duty signs up.
Right.
And the city staff will be visible. Our idea is to have them, city hat and a city shirt or a bright neon orange or yellow vest, like you'd see.
Identify, right?
Yes. So they're going to know who city staff is, they'll be identifiable. And you bring up special events, Fourth of July. There is a process in here, we don't want to restrict special events on the beach.
Right.
So through a written events permit process that we currently have in place, you can't have special events if they're approved on the beach. It's not like on the Fourth of July, we're going to herd everybody off the beach and close the beach for the fireworks.
We may have more than two monitors there that night.
Yes.
So somebody from staff or they will, would be able to accommodate the special event and lock up the gates and all that good stuff, or would they just turn it over to the special event?
No, no, we would.
Okay. Somebody would do that, just like we do at our conference center, I guess, yeah.
Correct.
Okay, Council, that probably sums it up as far as the curfew on the city beach. You've heard that from Aaron. Anybody got any questions for Aaron or City Manager? If none, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance nineteen twenty-nine amending the park curfew hours for the city beach park, including Article 1.50, the regulations of the Granbury City Code, from eight to eight PM or eight PM, whichever, sunset, whichever comes first.
So moved.
And I have that motion by Councilman Corrigan.
Second.
And a second by Councilman Reiner. Any more discussion on that, Council? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That is approved. Our next item is to consider adopting ordinance number nineteen thirty, establishing guidelines for commercial filming in Granbury and amending the Article 1.50 fee schedule for the city code. Once again, I'm going to call upon Chris Kaufman to give us a staff report on this item. Would you please, Chris?
Thank you, Mayor. This, y'all may, I was just getting a question here from Councilman Wadley. Was this on our agenda tonight? We actually have a film team in town videoing a reality TV show right now, and we've been working on this ordinance since last fall, but we've been working on fine-tuning it, making it a little different than some of the other cities. You know, we plagiarize what we can, but we still need to make it fit our community. And Jeremy's worked really, really well with Bethany to put this together. I believe Michael Ross is here to answer any questions y'all may have on it, but basically it lays out some filming guidelines. It also establishes us to qualify to be a film-friendly city recognized by the state of Texas in a database that people, when they want to video something for a movie or something, then they come to our database and see that and know that they can come to Granbury, and we've got sites already selected. There may be some public property that really works well, but there may be some private property that works well, that some citizens may want to put their property on there as a site for video and movies, so. Michael, have you, anything you need to add to that? We are trying to be brief, so this is getting close to the end.
I have nothing to add.
Okay.
Bethany took the lead on this. Unfortunately, my iPad didn't survive the length of this meeting, and it just died, so I don't have the.
Well, I will add or ask a question, and me and Bethany had talked about this, because I'd met with some people and they'd talked about this, and we brought it back to the city here to try to get to where we're at right now, but going forward, we can actually add to this, right? I mean, if we identify, after we get going, if we identify another building that might want to be considered in maybe a movie of somebody else's or whatever, then we can identify those buildings and, or homes, or whatever we have in the city of Granbury that goes along with that, right?
I believe so. Jeremy did a lot of the research with Bethany, so.
It's a working document, it can always be amended.
And I would like to just add, for the public that are still here, this birth, idea of birth at an association of rural communities in Texas annual conference, they had a session on this, the mayor was very interested in it, came back, and we've been talking about it, did the research, and so here it is tonight. It's from an opportunity to leave in our community to go see what other people are doing throughout the state, bring it back and implement something here that, had we had this in place with the people that are filming now, it would have been really easy to say, this is what we do, and we weren't doing it ad hoc as we go along. So this filming company's been really nice to work with, great people in town, and the TV show's going to be one of the premier shows for the season on CNBC when they begin airing it later in the summer, so it's pretty cool.
It is, it is.
And we need more of this. This is tourism dollars, those people staying in hotels, staying here, it's just good. So I'm excited that the staff put this together.
So Council, you got any questions on this item? Any concerns? Okay. If none, I'll entertain a motion to consider adopting ordinance number nineteen thirty, which is establishing the guidelines for the commercial filming in Granbury and amending the Article 1.4 for the fee schedule of the city code.
So moved.
And I have that motion by Councilman Wadley and Councilman Allen.
I'll second it.
So we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Here, none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. That is approved. At this time, I will now declare that the Granbury City Council has convened in an open session that all the members are present, and the city council will go into closed session pursuant to the position of Texas Government Code and the Courts for the Authority contained in the following section, Section 551-071, Constellation with Attorney, Section 551-072, Deliberation Regarding Real Property, and Section 551-087, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development. We will now go into executive session. Now reconvened in an open session, there was no action taken in the executive session. Council, is there any more further discussion? If there's no further discussion, the council meeting is now adjourned.